Of the Raleigh City Council, another virtual meeting. We are going to start with public comment. I'm going to remind everybody of the rules of decorum. Please, tonight, because of the volume of speakers, we are going to have two minutes each. I had asked the clerk to inform you of that. So each of you will have two minutes to speak. Please, you cannot give up your time for another speaker. And also, I just want to remind everybody, these trying times, we really need to show some kindness and compassion toward one another, some unity. So I would appreciate it if you would come to the microphone or phone with civility. So, thank you. Beth, will you start with the first speaker?
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker is Tim Niles.
Good evening, Councilors Melton and Buffkin. Two weeks ago, I noted you lied, saying Shelley Lake rezoning required a 215-foot tree buffer or buffer. Councilor Buffkin, you haven't corrected this. Councilor Melton, you issued a non-correction, removing the word "tree," claiming it was an editing error, but still insist there is a buffer. There is no buffer. You know this because I told you all the development that can take place in that 215-foot area: parking lots, dumpster enclosures, leasing offices, clubhouses, maintenance buildings, and more. Councilor Melton, after being called out for your lie, you've doubled down on it. Obviously, you don't want to admit that you lied or that you were fooled by the developer into believing in a buffer. Your so-called correction of your false tree buffer claim sounds less like the half-hearted incompetence of an inexperienced counselor and more like a lawyerly attempt to unring the bell of your original deceit. The city council operates under a code of conduct, and I quote, "demonstrate honesty, integrity, and transparency in every action and statement." Neither of you have lived up to this. My public comment today is my formal complaint against Councilors Melton and Buffkin for violating this code. If the rest of you are thinking, sure, I'm glad I didn't say anything about buffers, wipe that smug look off your faces. There was no honesty, integrity, or transparency in your secret attack on the CACs. Councilor Branch, you may not have voted for abolishing the CACs, but you happily participated in the plot. You kept it secret from your constituents and Councilor Cox. You are complicit with your constant need to bend your knee to Mayor Baldwin. None of you can lay claim to honesty, integrity, or transparency. It's simply not in your natures. Good evening.
Beth?
Sorry. Next, we have Leoma Wilson.
My name is Leoma Wilson. I am here as a grieving mother who lost her daughter, and I am here to ask you to include in your legislative package some change of dialogue, which will not allow physicians to escape any retribution from malpractice suits. My daughter was only 20 years old, and she was taken to the ER on five different occasions. And on the fifth time, she died under the care of Duke Raleigh Hospital. I contend that the physicians during my daughter's visits did not look for the problem simply because she was intellectually developmentally delayed. In the state of North Carolina, it is hard to sue the physicians and hold word against their claim. I believe this must change, and I'm asking that this change starts with you. I have a petition currently 8,557 signatures that stands with me also. Thank you.
Next, we have Martha C. Brock.
This is Martha Brock, and I live in North Raleigh, off of Capitol Boulevard. And I want to point out the needs of the people with disabilities. There are quite a lot of us actually in Raleigh. I just was looking at some of the numbers from your earlier meeting, and the fact that the Raleigh Housing Authority list has 1,925 households on it. I believe that's correct. I just want to say, a lot of those people have gotten dis... A lot of people, in addition to that, have gotten discouraged and gone away. I could not qualify for... ...of median-income group. All I have to live on is a social security check, and many other people who have severe disabilities are in that same situation. There are plenty of people with disabilities who are able to work, but we have the highest unemployment record of any group in the U.S. population. I just want to point out that the thing that is most important to me at this time is something you are focusing on. I just want to emphasize it, and that is combining or looking at the intersection of the housing issue and the transportation issue. But whatever you do, I do not think that the way the thing is worded now is appropriate. I believe it says there are no restrictions on how the money is to be used. And I do believe you have to focus on, as Cory Branch put it, "the lowest income in a holistic fashion across all the categories of the bond funding." Thank you.
Thank you. Martha, if you were to go to our meeting from this afternoon, there was a number of... There are five buckets for spending, and we created or gave staff direction on their recommendations to move forward on improving service for 30% AMI and below. Thank you. Beth will have next.
Steph Mindel.
I honestly don't understand why you're wasting taxpayer dollars on a consultant to help with public engagement. You, as a council, are demonstrating by your very actions that you don't care to engage with your constituents. Yesterday, all 23 of us who were signed up to speak today got an email saying the public comment time had been cut from three minutes per person to two minutes per person. Apparently, you can't handle 69 minutes of engagement. The public comment period is virtually the only opportunity your constituents have to engage with this council, although most of the time, the engagement is a farce. Most of you sit and play with your phones while we speak, and then, without any acknowledgement of our comments, you ask for the next speaker. Most of you routinely ignore your emails. You shut down the CACs. You illegally block constituents on social media. Some of you have listening sessions and promise to look into issues and respond to questions, but then you rarely, if ever, follow up. This unresponsive council, put into office during a municipal election with the percentage of voter turnout in the low teens, is an example of what happens when people don't exercise their right to vote. We can't afford that next time municipal elections are held in October 2021, and we certainly can't afford it this November, when the future direction of our country is at stake. People are understandably concerned about voting during a pandemic. I encourage all voters to attend a Q&amp;A forum this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. with Wake County Board of Elections Chair Greg Flynn. You can register for the free nonpartisan event at www.livableraleigh.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Next, we have Richard Johnson.
It was recently announced that City Manager Ruffin Hall is retiring at the end of the year. I don't blame him for abandoning a floundering city council led by an inept mayor. Just ask the Greater Raleigh Merchants Association how she's doing. With Ruffin's departure, Raleigh is now in the enviable position of being able to hire a truly dynamic and progressive city manager instead of just a hack who represents builders and developers. But that's not likely to happen, given what we've been told about how the search for Ruffin's replacement will be conducted. Apparently, there will be not be a contract with a professional search firm, as was the case for the vacant city attorney position or even the parks director position. Unbelievable. Instead, the very individuals who end up reporting to the new city manager are being asked to recruit them. Something doesn't smell right about that. Is the city manager position not important enough to warrant contracting with a national search firm? Or do you already have Ruffin's replacement in mind, and is the fix already in? Just a few weeks ago, you conducted a sham process to replace disgraced Councilor Sage Martin. You put 50 or more Raleigh residents through a meaningless charade when you had already promised Stormy Ford that you had the votes lined up to a pointer. Mayor Barnhill, your track record on secret plots, first with destroying the CACs and then with Councilor Ford's appointment, is despicable. In the interest of transparency and open, honest government, we deserve to know what's going on. So tell us now, what is going on? If you choose to say nothing, that speaks volumes.
Next, we have Sean Hollins.
Hi. I spoke at the last meeting to hopefully get you guys on board with unblocking all the citizens that want to speak and engage with you on social media that you've blocked from doing so. Y'all are aware, I'm sure by now, of some court decisions that mandate that you have to do so, but you haven't done so yet. So my first question for you is, why haven't you guys unblocked people yet? My second question is, why were dog walks made illegal during the curfew, both this past curfew and the curfew, I guess, a couple months ago? So I was hoping somebody with the rest of my time could actually answer those questions. Number one, why haven't you unblocked people yet? And number two, why are dog walks made illegal under the curfews? Thank you.
Next, we have Joshua Garlock. Garlock, but he is not on the call. So I'm going to move on to the next person, who is Dustin Prescott.
Proud but concerned Raleigh... Oh, hi there. Thank you. I come to you as a proud but concerned Raleigh citizen. I've enjoyed watching our city grow and the success of our once-thriving downtown area. Our restaurants, shops, and nightlife are the heartbeat of the city, and what brings people of all backgrounds together to experience what so many have poured their lives into to create. The events of the past few months have deeply disappointed me. Now, this once-center-of-life is struggling to survive, hurt from the shutdowns of the pandemic and by the senseless destruction and violence. I completely support the right to peacefully protest, but no group should be allowed to take our city hostage, as happened this past weekend. To approve this protest for Friday and Saturday nights was unreasonable and allows outside groups to hijack protests. The downtown workforce is now working remote, so these businesses rely on weekends to survive. Based on this, I ask that the night protests are not approved during the current climate. I'm also asking we preserve or increase funding for our brave policemen and women. According to Salary.com, the average salary for Raleigh police is less than $55,000 a year. Yet we expect them to perform at the level of a surgeon, while often being shot at or attacked. These individuals deal with the evils of our society: drugs, child abuse, sex trafficking, rape, murder. Many are not doing this for the money, but for the love of their neighbors and community. But at levels of this salary, departments will have to lower their standards to fill the positions needed. In order to preserve the ranks of our bravest and finest and recruit those of the future, we must ensure they have the resources they need to protect our community and themselves. Our city is an inclusive city that embraces everyone. We must take a hard stance against violence and make this a safe place for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, I am going to ask you to respond. I think a lot of people are under the notion that we actually approve or permit protests. Can you explain the process, please?
Certainly, Mayor and Council. To be clear, the protests that occurred this past weekend, as well as back in May, were not permitted events. They were what's considered spontaneous First Amendment protests with folks demonstrating under their rights for free speech. We do have permit processes that we use to help groups so that we can manage them effectively, but that really is just a notification provision. It's not a requirement or an obligation that we can deny a group expressing their freedom of speech. And so, to be clear, the protests of this past weekend and before... and in May were not permitted events. They were spontaneous First Amendment protests.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
Yes, just for clarification, can these spontaneous protests happen any time of day? Can they happen at 2:00 in the morning, for example?
I'm going to ask at this point if the city attorney can assist with this question because her office is particularly attuned to the First Amendment issue. So, City Attorney Robin Tan, if you could assist, please.
Yes, and I can prepare something detailed if you'd like. But in what's called a traditional public forum, where people normally exercise their speech rights, yes, they have a right to do that and do not have to have a permit. So, the question, 2:00 in the morning, can they protest? The answer is yes, unless there's a curfew, which is how we, you know, limiting hours in the past.
Can anything be done to encourage that these things be held earlier in the day?
Oh, can you... I think that's more you, Ruffin.
Yeah, it is. So, Councilmember Cox, our Raleigh Police Department, as well as our Office of Special Events, reaches out to organizations and groups all the time to try to manage those events and encourage different times and locations to help mitigate the impacts. So the difference is between encouragement and require. We make... We always reach out to organizations that are interested in expressing themselves and try to offer our assistance to put them in a time and place that is the least disruptive to the public. So we do reach out to the groups, and we do make that effort. I'm not aware of anything that we could do that would require it, however. That's the issue.
Right. And regarding liability, with the damages that do happen, can these groups be held liable for those damages?
I'll ask the city attorney to respond to that question.
Well, that's sort of a larger question. If someone... There's criminal liability, for one thing, and then separate, if you're talking about civil liability, if someone commits a tort, a civil wrong, and damages someone's property, that individual property owner would have a right to pursue recovery in court. But that would... They would have to know who did it. They would have to file a lawsuit. But, yeah, you cannot damage someone's property without some sort of civil liability if, in fact, the right procedures are gone through to hold them accountable.
But the organizers of the protest wouldn't necessarily be the subject of that legal action. Is that correct?
Well, I don't want to, like, say for sure, you know, sort of spontaneously, but it would depend on their actions. You know, you would have to decide whether someone was responsible for the damage or not, and that would depend on a lot of factors that, you know, would be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Beth, next.
Next speaker is Calla Wright.
Good evening. I'm Calla Wright. I'm here to address ongoing issues of racial, socioeconomic racial divide, institutional racism that continues to plague our community. Jim Crow era controlled the state and local laws, created racial discrimination and segregation. The 13th Amendment abolished slavery, but yet we're still enslaved in many areas, such as policing, housing, economic opportunities. Based on the recent action of the city council, there are hidden rules that are still being implemented widely today. The walking trails, Councilmember Branch and Werftel, causes environmental hazards. Sewer smells is very sickening. An old rusty pipe's caution light placed on Sunnybrook Road where someone was killed, instead of installing a stoplight, creates hazard for our citizens, who are walking along Sunnybrook Road because of debris and lack of sidewalks, a food desert. And the reused wastewater tower project was highly ineffective because of waste of money, the landscaping. Yet you have to address the issue of soil erosion, stormwater runoff on my property, City Manager. As elected officials, slavery ended in 1865. But yet, when will the Jim Crow era end? And when will you stop the practice of racial and socioeconomic discrimination among Black people and the people of color in our great, prosperous, and very thriving city of Raleigh? Thank you.
Samantha Rooney, but she is not on the call. We will move on to the next participant, who is Alana Goldman.
Hello. I'd like to tell you why I support the Green New Deal for Raleigh Housing Justice and why I think you should support it, too. This plan makes it possible for every citizen of Raleigh to go to bed at night with a roof over their head, which is an intrinsic human right that has gone unmet. It ensures that all Raleigh citizens will be funding a four... Will receive funding for affordable housing programs. It requires denser development by eliminating single-family zoning and legalizing building up. All of this near mass transit hubs. This is beneficial to the environment because the less land used is less land degraded. It discourages single-vehicle commute and makes mass transit more accessible. Mass transit reduces the amount of pollutants and greenhouse gases released into the atmosphere since less people are operating motor vehicles. released into the atmosphere, since less people are operating motor vehicles. The Green New Deal will make Raleigh a more affordable and environmentally friendly place to live, which is why I think you should vote to put it in place.
Next speaker. Is that a call?
Hey, guys. I'm here to also support what Alana just talked about, supporting the Sunrise. And, yeah, I've been a couple of other organizations who have been working on this and calling to eliminate single-family zoning from Raleigh. It's something that all of you campaigned on and really talked about doing once you were in office. And right now, you know, you just need to have the political will to be able to take it forward regardless of what other groups, et cetera, might say, because it's not that difficult to do that in this city. But what we're seeing is things like, you already know, people can't find affordable housing, et cetera. But what we're also seeing is us not focusing anything on Section 8 housing and recognizing that Raleigh has less Section House, Section 8 housing currently than they did 50 years ago. And I just wanted to also say that, you know, elections are next year. My Twitter is Polly underscore Tech Muslim, and if you're looking to run for council, hit me up. Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Geary. Give me one second, Bob. There you are.
Right. I'm Bob Geary. I'm a member of the Wake County Housing Justice Coalition. I've spoken to you before about your proposed 2020 Affordable Housing Bond issue and the absence of any commitment to help the low-income families and individuals with the greatest need. I watched earlier today as you received some recommendations from your housing and neighborhood's department, and you endorsed them without much discussion and, in my opinion, no useful analysis. Thank you, Counselor Cox, for voting no. My quick analysis is that the recommendations are better than nothing, but not a lot better. But what I really wanted to say is that these recommendations should have come to you months ago, when our coalition pleaded with you to step up and define this bond. We came to you in February, in March, on June 2nd, with detailed recommendations, no response. Your public engagement process has been, in a word, atrocious. Nothing new there. Had you acted on the bond in March or June, there would have been time for reflection about what you did and whether it was good enough. But you waited and waited until today, September 1st, when we are literally on the brink of starting mail-in voting, and there is no time for public reflection. Three things are missing from your action today. One, you failed to create any sort of oversight process. Two, you endorsed the targets but made no commitments to them. And three, the targets are weak. Your staff made them sound better than they are by mixing up city spending with housing vouchers funded by the county. But the plain fact is, the city prefers to subsidize housing for moderate-income families and leave the poor to the county. Raleigh, we have a problem. Thank you.
Next, we have Tracy Maxwell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My family and I have been Raleigh residents our entire lives. We have been downtown business owners since the 1950s. We have seen a lot of changes over the years, but nothing as outrageous as what we are seeing today. Mayor Baldwin, I speak for myself and many others when I say, we strongly feel you are trying to run Raleigh with your own political views and agenda, which are, as of current, very disturbing and dangerous for the citizens of Raleigh. Your views do not represent the citizens of Raleigh as a whole. Your political agenda should come second to the oath you took to serve Raleigh and our citizens, not just yourself and your political party. Defunding the police is radical and extremely irresponsible. Criminals will not stop being criminals because you asked them to and promised to fund money elsewhere. Raleigh citizens and business owners are burdened with high taxes, a lot of which go to public safety. How irresponsible of you to try to diminish our rights and needs for the protection our police officers provide us. Only criminals want to defund and do away with police. Changes can be made without demonizing all police. It is egregious to treat all law enforcement as bad because of a few. Your political party has become so filled with hate, it has destroyed your common sense and moral compass. It is appalling what your party is trying to do to our great country, and decent, law-abiding citizens will not sit back and quietly let you feed us to the wolves while you bow down to the radicals.
I have Charlie Burnett, who is not on the call. We have Betsy Adcock, who is also not on the call. And so we will move on to Regina Burge. One second, Regina. There you go, Regina.
Hello. Thank you for your time and willingness. Can you hear me? Thank you for your time and willingness to hear my point of view. I'm coming to you today to speak in favor of raising the funding for the police. There is an extensive range of duties we expect from police officers, everything from traffic duties and investigating crimes, finding lost individuals, protection of homes and businesses, and many more. All citizens should be able to call 911 and have access to officers in an emergency. Response times could be lowered with more officers. They need access to technologically advanced materials and training to mediate domestic disputes and safely subdue violent offenders. These brave men and women risk their lives daily. Why do we need police? Well, humans are sinful. If you or I decided to leave our wallets on our front porch, we know what would happen. Passions within people cause people to be at war within themselves. People have not what they want, so they steal and fight and show violence and murder. For where jealousy and ambition exist, there will be disorder. People are hurting people. Self-control is very difficult, and people yield to temptation. We need to live in harmony with each other. Police promote this harmony by enforcing the law as established by our legislators. There are governments releasing convicted prisoners due to COVID-19 threats. They may prey on citizens, so increased surveillance is needed. Any law is meaningless unless it is enforced. We pay taxes for police protection. Having an efficient, well-funded police force will discourage vigilante accidents that will surely result in more crime and violence. We need to love each other, and we need to love others as ourselves. Our police are needed to enforce our necessary community laws to create a stable environment. Please support, and please increase funding for our police. Thank you.
Next, we have Jane Harrison.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jane Harrison, and I have come tonight to speak about the Affordable Housing Bond on the ballot this November. I have not had a chance to review what was discussed this afternoon. I'm very interested to do so. Before this afternoon, I was concerned that the Affordable Housing Bond did not have the proper commitments in place to ensure that it would meet the needs of those who are most, most in need of safe and affordable housing. You know, oftentimes, our affordable housing goes to those who are of moderate income, so those at the kind of 60% AMI level, whereas those at the 30% AMI or less have not, you know, received as much support. I just want to, you know, give a personal story of why this, this really matters to me. My Aunt Carol lives in an affordable housing apartment complex in Sarasota, Florida. She lost her home in the financial crisis after the 2008 recession. You know, she went under financially, and she has worked in service and retail jobs her entire life. She's 67 years old. She's still working. She works at a nursing home, and she makes about $25,000 a year, and she can afford to, to live where she does. And it's not taking every penny of her income to do so, and she's in a safe place. And, you know, I just really want to put it out there that, you know, the Aunt Carols of this world and those that live in Raleigh really need our support, and I think this Affordable Housing Bond of $80 million, you know, needs to be considering those that have the most need. I appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Next, we have Atharun.
Hear me? So, yes, we can. Okay, awesome. I received an alert on Wednesday, the 26th, via Facebook through Free Wake, and it was an alert about protesting downtown. And so, I alerted all my friends. The alert was to inform you that there was going to be a riot, if you didn't already know. I say riots. It's supposed to be a peaceful protesting, but I've not seen peaceful yet, and it's becoming even worse. So I would like to know how the general public can be alerted quicker and better than what occurred, because I called your office, and I know several other people that called your office. And now, mind it, I'm a hairdresser. I get lots of opinions from the general public. And I had someone sit in my chair that was going to go downtown on Friday and have dinner, a birthday dinner, with her child, and she, she changed that because she did not want to be in an unsafe environment. So I think public safety needs to be the first important thing on your agenda always, and making certain these times are different. You know, you say that they can protest and can't stop them. Well, if it's rioting, it should not be allowed at all. The violence in America is escalating. It should not be tolerated. The defunding agenda for the police is making criminals free. Feel free to destroy property and hurt others because they think it's okay. The rioting is an infection. It's making people feel justified for their terroristic behavior. Police need more support from our elected officials. They need more money, not less. They need more police, not mess, less. They keep our community safe. I don't want our community without officials.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Uber? Mary?
Ah, yes, thank you. I'm calling and speaking tonight about affordable housing. I've watched your meeting today. I've been paying attention for a while, and I really feel like there were only a few people who were paying attention to the numbers that your staff person from the city presented today, including the fact that when you take a number of, say, the existing tax credit, and you do a poll, an internal, however he called it, poll, 14% are required for 30% AMI. But you know what? 37% of the units are occupied by 30% AMI households. You're mixing stuff there. Just because 14% is required for them to, 30% are occupied, that's part of the 37% are receiving vouchers. The management is getting their full market rate. So I understand that you can't do 100% affordable housing at 30% AMI. But, you know, if you hold the keys to building here, which you guys do, and you can demand 14% be targeted for 30% AMI, you can also say, you know what, people? You can also have to accept 50% of vouchers, because we know that there are people with vouchers and the, who don't, can't find a place to live. I don't understand where the problem is with this. The same thing with supportive housing. It's the same numbers. The flint slam that the city person just did on you, there's required, and then there's, oh, joy, we're over that number. We've got all these people occupied. They're still reaching their 100% market rate when they accept these vouchers.
Thank you.
Don't be fooled by this. That's ridiculous.
Thank you. Beth, who's next?
Zia Delise, but she is not on the call. And then we have Caroline De Meyer, who is also not on the call. So we are at Donna Bailey.
Okay, I'm in two more. Okay.
Do you, are you listening on the YouTube as well, or the Cartan channel?
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Hi, I wanted to talk to you tonight about two things, the Affordable Housing Bond and citizen engagement. You are missing the boat on the need, the absolute need in Raleigh to address the poorest people. Why we have so many people in hotels, homeless people, we need to focus on 30% AMI. I do not trust this council to do the right thing. There's a, there's a big reason why there's, a lot of people don't trust this council to do the right thing. Where have you gotten its citizen input regarding this Affordable Housing Bond? It's very clear, even when people come and speak to you, whether it's in person or at this council, and I want to remind you that you're all on camera. So every one of you that is looking down at your cameras and not actively listening, you're sending a very clear message about who you are listening to. I want to ask, why is it that some people get their questions answered and others, it appears the ones that don't agree with you, they just, you just don't listen, you go onto the next speaker, and nothing happens? When there is absolutely no other citizen engagement going on, this is our opportunity. So I also want to ask you, what did you learn from Mayor Shul, from Durham, when you invited him? And he was very specific about why Durham's bond was very successful. It was very targeted of how much would go to 30%, 50%. It seems like you didn't learn anything. There's a need now more than ever for citizen engagement, and you are all very ill-prepared. I, you're asking for the people of Raleigh to trust what you can do with this bond? You, you have lost that trust. So I know personally, I will not be voting to support this bond the way it is written. Your time is up. Thank you.
Mayor, that is the end of public comment.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
Mayor?
And, yes, Clerk?
We received between 50 and 60 public comments by the sign-up period, and they have all been forwarded to the full City Council for review.
Okay. I would just like to state for the record, a lot of these were related to defunding the police in a meeting in closed session. This was not an agenda item, and I don't know where this rumor started, but for anybody listening, it is not true. So, with that, we will continue with our evening agenda. The first item is the annexation agreement with the town of Cary.
Mayor, the staff is here and can answer any questions if you'd like. There's no one signed up for the two items, so it's just a matter of whether or not you want the staff to describe the project to you, or if you'd like to proceed, it's up to you.
Let me ask this. Does anybody on council have a question? Okay, then I will open the hearing. I'll close the hearing, and I will ask for a motion. Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Motion to approve by Councilor Melton. Do I have a second? Councilor Buffkin. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, Clerk, that was unanimous. Next is the annexation petition for contiguous inside ETJ, 6501 Buffalo Road, District B. No one has signed up to speak on this.
ETJ 6501 Buffalo Road, District B. No one has signed up to speak on this.
It's 6501 Buffalo Road, and I can answer any questions that you have, and we have a short presentation if you have additional questions. Some slides.
Does anyone have, Councilor Cox?
I would like to hear his presentation, if that's okay.
Sure.
Sure, thank you. We'll have that up in just a second. It is 17.59 acres on 6501 Buffalo Road. You'll see the map in just a second. It's contiguous with city limits, and it's inside our ETJ. They're looking to hook up to sewer and water, and... I'll have some visuals on that in just a moment. There we go. Great, thank you. So the site's currently zoned OX3 conditional use. The developer is planning on constructing 91 townhomes on the property. The subdivision plan for that is approved. It is allowable within the zoning district specified. There's a waterline present in Buffalo Road to the south. Sewer service is present at the northwest boundaries and eastern boundaries of the property. So if we go onto the next slide, we can go over a few specifics of the site. You can see that the surrounding area is wooded. There's also single-family homes to the west and to the south, low-density residential. If we go to the next slide, can see where the utilities are located. So the blue line that you see is the water directly in the center line of Buffalo Road, and sewer to the edge of the parcel on the western side and on the northeast. We go to the next slide, shows you current zoning, which is OX3 conditional use. However, the zoning around the area is low-density at R4, single-family homes. Go to the next, you'll see the topography and floodplain. It is close to the Neuse River, but the property itself, only a small portion is in the floodplain, and the subdivision plan does not call for construction on that part of the site. And that is a street view at present. And if you have additional questions on that, I'd be happy to answer anything that you have.
So after annexation, you would have to go for rezoning in order to build the town?
No, I believe that it has a, it's, residential development is allowed on the site with the current zoning. It does have an approved subdivision plan for 91 townhomes. That was approved back in 2018, I believe.
Okay. I'll ask the city attorney, I guess, then. Does OX allow for residential?
I mean, I'll answer that probably just as well as I can. I mean, it does allow for residential. I would have to get the UDO. I'm assuming that because they're not asking to rezone it in conjunction with this annexation, that the use is permitted. Is that correct?
That's correct, then. Okay. Okay, I wasn't clear if, because it's zoned off as mixed use, if it would allow rezoning.
Well, I assume it was in the ETJ. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's why you're not zoning. It's already zoned, so whatever.
But it's zoned for OX.
Well, whatever they're going to do, whatever, this is not for a project. This is only for an annexation. So this would pull it into the district. So whatever they build, they will have, if what they're proposing is permitted already, which was my assumption, but I can't promise to that, then whatever they build, they will have to get it rezoned, whether it's permitted now, or, I mean, if it's not permitted now, they will have to get it rezoned. This annexation is not giving them permission to build.
Right, right, right. But I just wanted to be clear that if they were annexed and the OX is the base zone after they're annexed, then they, my question is, would they have to be rezoned in order to build the townhouse?
I can't be sure without looking at the UDO density and the uses, but can we ask the planning staff? Yeah, where's the planning staff? That's...
To respond?
Is there no one from planning here tonight?
There has to be.
Double check on that from what, I don't know. I would have to check on that for the conditional use, yes. So.
Councilor Buffkin?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm looking at page four of the staff memo, and it says that an approved subdivision, Z4918, would allow 91 townhomes to be, 91 townhomes on the site. So I think maybe you all can help me understand this. It sounds like the parcel we're talking about tonight, while it was in the ETJ, it was also within the subdivision that's authorized townhomes as a permitted use. Is that helpful? Well, is it correct? And is that helpful?
A subdivision just does lots in density, so presumably it's, that's what I said, presumably it is. I don't know what's changed since then. That's creating the lots. So you would think it is, but I'm just telling you, I can't say definitively without pulling out the UDO. But they can only build on their what is permitted under the UDO at the time they decide to build it, which they're not at that point yet.
Well, let me, first of all, let's find out, is anyone from the planning department in this meeting tonight? Because we have a lot of text changes and zoning requests to go through.
I would ask that if you want to speak, to please raise your hand, and I will acknowledge you. Thank you. Bynum?
Hi, Mayor. How are you? It's great to see you. So this property currently has city zoning. It's an OX3 with conditions in place currently. My understanding is there's an approved site plan that's already moved through the review process. So at this point, the annexation is access service. There are conditions that limit the residential density to no more than 10 units per acre, but as far as I can tell, the conditions would permit townhouse development under the current base zoning and conditions.
So Bynum, I have this question.
Excuse me.
All right, I got my hand up.
Raise your hand. I will ask you, okay? Councilmember Cox, please, let's have some decorum.
It's a very simple question. Does OX allow residential development?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Councilor Cox?
No, I would like to move to approve the annexation.
I need to open and close the public hearing. First, Councilor Branch, you had your hand raised? Okay. I will open the hearing. Since there's no one scheduled to speak, I will close the hearing. Do I have a motion to approve? Councilor Cox, do we have a second? Councilor Branch, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Passage unanimously, Clerk. So on my public hearing sheet, I have something that is not on our agenda, and it's the process to relinquish Swift Creek watershed. That is not on the agenda, but it's on this other item. City manager?
I would have to defer to the clerk. That's the clerk's sheet.
Okay, so I'm, go by the actual for public hearing on the, on the agenda.
I believe the next item is the rezoning case. I'm not sure that that, I don't know that you pay attention to that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z1719, Capital Boulevard, southeast of its intersection with P Street, District C.
Good evening. Bynum Walter with City Planning, waiting for slides to come up for Z1719. This is a request to rezone a little bit over three acres from industrial mixed-use with a 12-story height limit to downtown mixed-use. I'm sorry, a combination of industrial and downtown mixed-use right now with 12-story height limit. The request is to go to downtown mixed-use, 40-story height with a shopfront frontage and some conditions. The planning commission recommends approval, and this was in front of the North CAC last year before you took action to change CAC practices. You can see the site outlined in black here. It's both industrial and downtown mixed-use, and surrounded mostly by downtown mixed-use zoning adjacent. Here's an aerial view of the site. You can see the railroad on the east side of the site, and this is at the southeast corner of Capital Boulevard and P Street. And you can see the roundhouse, the remains of the roundhouse associated with the railroad carved out of a portion of the site boundary. Couple of views of the site from Capital Boulevard, looking north, P Street, looking east, P Street, looking west, and Capital Boulevard, looking south. The conditions here prohibit a handful of uses and provide for a city bike share station to be located on the site. You're seeing an increase here with the height in the maximum office, maximum retail, and potential maximum industrial uses, as well as a significant increase in residential entitlement, and then the overall maximum building size also increasing significantly. This is consistent with the central business designation on the future land use map. It's also consistent with the urban form map, and consistent with the comprehensive plan overall. Handful of consistent policies here for your consideration. No inconsistent policies were identified. Again, the planning commission and the CAC recommended approval last year. What questions could I answer for you about the case?
Councilmember Branch?
Yes, thank you. I understand that there was a traffic study done. Can we get some information on the traffic study and what information it gave? Because this area is highly congested.
I'm going to allow Jason Myers from Office of Transportation Planning to come up and answer your question, Mr. Branch.
Yes, there was a TIA done for this case. There was actually two versions of it done, which may have generated a little bit of confusion. The first was done with some old projections of future traffic, given that the area was under construction, and the second one, the second revision of that was done with some new actual counts that were adjusted a little bit because of COVID. And the general results show that infrastructure is sufficient for this development for all of those areas. And I can answer specific questions. I've got the review of it right here.
Council Branch?
As far as the right-in, right-out, our ingress and egress of the property, how is that to be handled?
How would that be handled?
Yeah, because I know one street is an exit route.
Yes. So there's two access points to this site. One of them would be on P Street that would be right-in, right-out. The other would be on a short section of Johnson Street that, right now, is unimproved, that would be right-in, right-out to the off-ramp from Capital Boulevard to P Street. So it does create some very circuitous movements to get in and out of the site in certain directions, which is why a traffic study was especially important. But it, the analysis did show that it met the level of service standards in the UDO.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, I am going to open the public hearing. We have two people here speaking in support, Tom Johnson and Travis Fluid. Could we get Mr. Johnson on the line, Beth?
Yep.
Johnson is unmuted.
This is Tom Johnson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant of the law firm of Williams-Mullen at 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1700 in Raleigh. This has been rezoning that's been on the table for quite some time. We've been working through the process, especially, and I appreciate staff and how they've been working with us, particularly transportation staff, because as Jason said, we did have some earlier figures where we were doing projections, and then we came back and did some additional actual traffic counts, taking into account the improvements to Capital Boulevard. And with those actual traffic counts, it addressed any concerns about traffic movement. And Mayor ProTin Branch, indeed, there's a right-in, right-out on Johnson Street, which is an existing public right-of-way, so that's one of the entrances, and the other will be a right-in and right-out on P Street. But in addition to that, in connection with this project, it was, this was a collection of properties, including some properties, property from CSX. In other words, Zimmer Development acquired some property from the right-of-way of CSX, and as part of that deal, got secured agreement from CSX to, in the future, be able to put a pedestrian crossing across the roadway to the state government complex. And there've already been some preliminary discussions with the state on how to work that, but that will provide for some better pedestrian movement in the area. And in addition, secured some agreement, an agreement with CSX to allow to upgrade the lighting and maybe put some artwork under the trestle that crosses P Street to make it more appealing for bike and pedestrian traffic. So those are some good things that will really help in the redevelopment of this area that is certainly a gateway to downtown Raleigh. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. We've worked through this and got unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. And again, as the staff report indicates, this request is consistent with all of the policies. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And I also do have Travis Fluid with me with Kim Lee Horn. He has signed up and can address any specific traffic questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Cox?
Regarding the level of service for traffic, what level of service would we be looking at?
Well, they all fall within the acceptable level of service. The particulars is it was an evaluation of various intersections, but overall, at all of those intersections, the project, even as approved, would operate within an acceptable level of service.
And which can be all the way down to a D for a level of service at any of the intersections? Or any intersections, would they be operating at a level F?
It's my understanding you can, I can have Mr. Fluid address it and/or transportation staff, but it's my understanding that none of them would operate at an F because they couldn't. It would not be an acceptable level of service if they did.
What's the best level of service in the local neighborhood?
I'm sorry?
I just need more details. I mean, how many intersections were actually examined, and what was the level of service at each of those intersections?
Could we have Travis come up and give a little more detail on the traffic study, please?
Be glad to.
Thank you.
Mayor, did you want Travis Fluid to be unmuted?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Travis. Travis?
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Good evening. Travis Fluid with Kim Lee Horn Associates here on behalf of the applicant. Yes, our traffic study included a, quite a few intersections in the study area, going from, on P Street, going from West Street over to Wilmington-Sallsbury Street, and then we also included the two ramps on Capital Boulevard at Johnson Street, Johnson Street at Harrington Street, and Johnson Street at West Street. All of the signalized intersections are going to operate at level of service D or better. The two intersections that were projected to operate at level of service C were P Street at Harrington Street and P Street at the northbound Capital Boulevard ramps. We had recommended some mitigation measures that could be implemented at both of those intersections to improve the level of service down to level of service B or level of service C. City staff does have some concerns with those mitigation measures, potentially because of their impact to pedestrians. So the discussion has been that they not be offered as, you know, any requirements at this time. It takes kind of a wait-and-see approach to determine the actual level of development and the actual traffic levels, and that those improvements could be done in the future. It's just a matter of restriping at the intersections. But all of the other signalized intersections are expected to operate acceptably, and no significant queuing issues were observed as a result of the rezoning.
Now, does this study take into account the current traffic conditions and the impact of just this development on the current traffic conditions, or does it also take into consideration all the other development that is going on on P Street and nearby?
It does factor in. Much of the development in the area included Smoky Hollow, Phases 1 and 2, as well as the Seaboard Station redevelopment. And then on top of that, we also included a background growth rate of 1% a year from the year 2020 up to the year the year 2020 up to the year 2025, to account for just ambient growth in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? No, no other questions from council. There's no one else to sign up to speak, so I will close the hearing. Council Branch?
Yeah, also, just so all councils are aware, starting on page 46 in the background material, has Kim Lee Horn's full transit report. I didn't ask too many questions there because I went back and reviewed that report and the intersections. But with that said and everything, I move for approval of this project. Hold on, let me see, is there a consensus statement I need to read? I don't see. Oh, yep, hold on, I'm sorry. I move to adopt the proposed consensus statement dated September 1st, 2020, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda items under recommended actions.
Jonathan, are you seconding? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Clerk, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z 4719, located on the east side of Durlie Road, on the south side of where it crosses the Crabtree Creek.
This is a request to rezone just over 26 acres from R4 to RX5 with conditions. There's no specific future land use map designation for this particular parcel. The request is consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan. The Northwest CAC voted to recommend denial back in March during the transition period of CAC organization, and the Planning Commission makes no recommendation. As you can see, zoning in the area is largely residential, a combination of R4 and R6, and R6 with conditions. There's an aerial view of the site. You can see the active quarry on the west side of Durlie here, and then a lot of commercial along Glenwood Avenue, and multifamily largely along Durlie Road in spots, and then single-family blended in. Closer-in view of the site, there is a rest home immediately south, adjacent to the single-family neighborhood that's also adjacent to the site. Couple of views of the site from Durlie. So uses are limited to residential, and building types are limited to townhouses and apartments by the conditions that are proposed. Residential density is limited to no more than 14 units per acre, and apartment building location is limited. I'll have an exhibit for that. And then there's some specifications about building heights, so limiting specific height, and then also establishing a 4-4 split regulation. I'll also have an illustration for that. Landscape yard with an average width along the eastern property and southern property lines, and a pedestrian easement from a public street to the City of Oaks Foundation property. So here's an illustration of that no apartment building area, shown in green here, within 150 feet of the eastern and southern property line, and then also the 50-foot average landscape area buffer in that same area. An illustration of what that 4-4 split means when the applicant says that. So building cannot be more than four stories on either end, regardless of grade. And then illustration of the location of that City of Oaks property that the applicant has offered connection to a public street from, to that site. So what's changing here? Your entitlement is increasing, the residential density is increasing significantly, the maximum number of units increasing, and then your setbacks are changing here. The front setback is, the range increases there, and then the side setback does increase, and the rear or east lot line setback also increases. The future land use map, again, there's no specific designation here. This is part of a larger special study area, but that designation does not preclude the opportunity for rezoning. And the special study area is in place because of the quarry and the expectation that while it is active and will remain so for the foreseeable future, it will not be in that way, in that condition in perpetuity, and that as a community, we would want to evaluate how to use that land as that use transitions away. And just a look at the larger special study area, you can see the site as a small portion of that larger area. There's no urban form designation here. Again, consistent with the comprehensive plan overall, so some consistent policies there. There are a handful of inconsistent policies that you may want to consider, again, consistent overall with the plan. And if approved, would amend the future land use map to medium-density residential here. This fits, given the density and the height combined, the medium-density residential, even though the 16, six, the 14 units per acre sits with the moderate-density residential designation, the height really suggests the medium-density designation on the map. Again, the Planning Commission made no recommendation here, and Northwest CAC voted to recommend denial. What questions could I answer for you before you open the public hearing?
Council Branch?
Yes, we received an email concerning, and this is something I noticed, too. This area is classified as a special study area. Can you explain why this was done? I mean, I have an understanding, but I think just for the general public and everyone, why was this marked special study area?
Sure. So we have several special study areas designated on the future land use map. There are at least two quarries, and this is one of them. Again, recognizing that the current use of the quarry is not our long-term vision for the use of the land as a community, and that future study as the quarry transitions offline, which will happen eventually. It's not an inexhaustible resource, that as a community, we would want to look at that and evaluate how to use that land going forward. That special study area designation does not preclude the opportunity for a rezoning. So in place, and frankly, no immediate plan to complete that study, given that the operation of the quarry is expected to continue for the foreseeable future.
Councilor Cox?
So to be clear, no study has been done, no special study has been done on this particular piece of land?
Correct.
Okay, so we've not had any kind of a public process to even think about what the proper use of this land is? Is that correct?
That's correct. Again, the quarry's operation is expected to continue for a good amount of time. So I think only once we were expecting the operation to discontinue would we want to spend public resources to make a decision about future land use.
Okay, now, another question. I understand, you know, there were 50 people at the CAC that are opposed to this. Understand a lot of the concerns have to do with environmental concerns. Can you elaborate on that?
I could ask Wayne Miles to come up and speak to you about stormwater, if that's what you're asking about specifically.
Well, I guess it's steep slopes, it slopes down to Crabtree Creek, and I guess there would be a lot of impacts. So yes, whatever.
I'll let Mr. Miles, I'll let Mr. Miles speak to that.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Miles, Stormwater Program Manager for the city. Yes, we have heard and spoken with one of the residents about the downstream stormwater concerns. There is very steep terrain in this area, and several residential homes would be directly downstream from that eastern boundary of the proposed rezoning property. And there is a situation of known downstream structural impacts that would have to be considered as part of the design of the, of any development on that property.
Okay, and how steep are the slopes? I mean, what kind of painting walls would have to build?
I don't know exact numbers, sir, but it's a fairly steep terrain. If you've driven down Durlie in that area, there's a fairly steep hill going down to Crabtree Creek. And that's typical of the terrain in that area. And also a lot of rocky soil in that area as well.
So rocky soil is more like impervious surface, so there's less opportunity for water to Is that correct?
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat the comment? I didn't hear that.
The rocky soil is, would be more impervious, so that there would be less opportunity for the rain to penetrate the soil?
Yes, it would be, it would have less infiltration opportunity from stormwater and more runoff in general.
Any additional questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, we have four people in support and four people opposed, so, yes.
I have the client's attorney on, and also another one for the opposition. If you'd like to start with them, Jamie and?
We'll start with Jamie. Remember, there's eight minutes per side, so we'll start with Jamie.
Here, here on behalf of the applicant, Wood Partners. Our development is also on the line and available to answer questions. I think I might have gotten cut off. This is Jamie Schwaber, 301 Fayetteville Street. There's a presentation that we submitted that I'd like to run through to kind of illustrate some of the challenges that are associated with this site. And Bynum did a great job in pulling up much of the special study area, so I won't talk While she's bringing it up, I can kind of summarize that this case is a 26-acre parcel across from, this is not the correct presentation. And Madam Mayor, if I could just ask that the clock be stopped while we're waiting for the presentation to be brought up, please?
It seems we do have it now, and so they're working to bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
You can move to the second slide, please. This rezoning is taking the site on the west side of, or the east side of Durlie Road from the R4 and R6 to propose a townhome and multifamily development. Next slide. Bynum did a great job, to give it advanced this slide, of describing why this area is a special study area. I think it's significant to note that this particular parcel is a 26-acre portion of the overall. And the next slide will show that this area was actually carved out as a result of litigation years ago with the city, and mining cannot continue on the parcel. And so, in the meantime, housing has continued to grow as a need in this area, and we've seeked to begin the rezoning process. We did check with the city before applying for the rezoning as to whether the rezoning itself could serve as the public process for engagement. And to that end, we have gone forward and had five meetings with the local neighbors and interested parties in this rezoning to gather that feedback. Next slide, please. This shows the future land use map. We did select a moderate-density residential to align with the 14 units per acre that we're seeking, but we do not object to the city's preference for a medium-density residential. Next slide. And the reason the 14 units per acre were chosen was that it's consistent with the density study that we did along this corridor, which ranged from 24 units per acre in multifamily to 10 units per acre. So our 14 units per acre is in the middle and slightly lower side of what you see along that corridor in terms of density and arrangement along Durlie Road. Next slide. The site has significant topography changes, as you can see in this slide, headed south down the, north up the creek, down to Crabtree Creek, which drops from 360 feet in elevation down to 230, and then again from Durlie Road to the south and eastern property lines. This makes the challenging not only degrade the site, but determine where placement of buildings and stormwater will go at the zoning stage, as much of this has to be worked out at the site plan stage. Next slide, please. Nevertheless, we held our first neighborhood meeting in August of 2019 and met with the neighbors and presented the CAC now five times. Due to those early engagement and neighbor comments, you can see the list on your screen of the comments we received and the proposed conditions, many of which are now what you see before you as part of the case. The neighbors had concern about non-residential uses being allowed in the RX district due to noise and traffic, and so we limited to the plan to townhomes and apartments. They were concerned about the density and about the height, which in RX5 could be up to 75 feet. We worked hard to create a condition to bring us down to 68 feet and four stories or a 4-4 split, which now aligns with your text change at the maximum height for four stories. The neighbors also preferred not to see the backyard. The neighbors also preferred not to see the backyard of townhomes, not the backyard of apartment buildings, but rather the townhomes, and wanted a thicker buffer due to privacy. And so we added a limitation to restrict ourselves from putting apartment buildings within 150 feet of the southern and eastern property lines, and committed to the wide version of the protective yard. Instead of the minimum 10 feet, we'll have a minimum of 50 feet average along the eastern and southern property lines. Can you, next slide, please. And these conditions resulted in what you see in your staff report, which as Bynum mentioned, did recommend that these were all consistent overall with the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. This illustrates the building height condition taken from the Hillside Manual and working hard with the staff to bring that height down to something that would help the transition to go from the quarry to the apartment use along Durley Road, to the townhome use closer to the single family, and then eventually the single family. What it does is allow us to step down those grades that you saw from south to north and from west to east, so that we can work with the site as much as possible and minimize grading. Next slide, please. A TIA was not required at zoning due to the level of traffic that we will generate, but it was conducted anyway, was re-reviewed by NC DOT, and the recommendations are shown on your screen. On the south entrance towards the top of the hill, which is screen right, there would be a full access with an ingress and egress lane, as well as 100 feet of a taper in storage lane for folks to make that left-hand turn at the top of the hill. Down towards the Crabtree Creek, which is screen left, it would only be a right-in, right-out, and that median would remain in place to limit movements as you approach Crabtree Creek and navigating the curve there. Next slide, please. There were requests along the way to provide a connection to Crabtree Creek, and this slide shows where an existing dedicated greenway easement exists on the site, shown in green. The purple and orange notes on areas on the slide note existing DOT slope and drainage easements in favor of DOT holding up the Crabtree Bridge where we would not be able to grade. And you can see the grades as you close down to Crabtree Creek, which is screen left, that provide some significant limitations to making that connection. Primary TCA is also required in this area. And nevertheless, we worked with staff to offer a commitment that I'll talk about towards the end of the case, providing a connection as long as it's not ADA accessible. Next slide, please. And the reason that's important is the city is engaged in a Crabtree West connection, and the blow-up is there on screen right, showing a proposed switchback on the other side of Durley Road. So it takes up a large amount of area, which forces us to grade more, to impact the trees more, and have more disturbance. We prefer to make that connection without having the ADA-accessible switchback because it's just on the other side of the street. Next slide, please. As noted in the staff report, we are consistent overall with the comprehensive plan. In addition, we are prepared to offer four new conditions I circulated to the council yesterday and have shared with interested parties. They were proposed at the planning commission but not acted upon, and so we would be looking to eventually close the public hearing and make this formally a part of the case. Those include that no retaining walls will be placed within 50 feet of the adjacent parcels to the south and the east containing detached houses. And along these adjacent residential parcels, the transition yard shall include a natural buffer or tree conservation area in a width of 25 feet average, that no building shall be placed closer than 55 feet from adjacent residential parcels, and that the developer will construct a pedestrian connection from Durley Road to the greenway as long as connection is not required to be ADA-accessible. This request with the, is consistent with the comprehensive plan in response to neighbor requests and feedback we've received over this approximately year-long process. As of this morning, I plan to ask you to close the public hearing and move forward to a vote on September 15th, but at 3:00 PM, we received a list of nine new requests from the same neighbors we've been meeting with since last August and is part of this long public process. While we'd like to continue working with the neighbors, we've already offered substantial compromises to make this request congruent with the area and meet their concerns, and we do not want to delay the case much longer, but we remain able to discuss in good faith and move the case forward in a way that the council is comfortable with. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions and note the questions that were raised earlier. We're happy to have our engineer and developer. Thank you.
Okay, Beth, who do we have on the line who is opposed? I see Sean Sowers, Anthony Pettish, Thomas.
Andy is, you might want to lead off with Andy.
Okay, he's on the phone?
Yes. You want me to have him and move to that?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Andy Pettish Law, 127 West Hargit Street, on behalf of two property owners on Timberhurst Drive and two property owners on Balsam Drive, both of which are in the immediate vicinity, if not abutting, the subject parcel. I came into this after the planning commission and in that time have reviewed the comprehensive plan, the staff report, the future land use map, existing development in the area, site visit, looking at the topography and other physical attributes of the site. And I have to say that going from R4 to RX5 in this location with the characteristics of this property is an extraordinary request. We're talking about 360-plus dwelling units on a 26-acre parcel next to low-density residential. And while that doesn't mean it shouldn't be approved, I think that a request like this should also come with extraordinary protections for the community and extraordinary benefits to the city. And in that regard, I think progress is being made on the conditions that are offered, keeping a natural area in the buffer in the, around the residential area, expanding greenway connectivity through this site. But I think that there are also still a few sticking points, and we're working with Ms. Schwedler and the applicant on resolving them. And I would say that we're in shouting distance now, and I'm optimistic that we can get much closer over the next week or so on the key remaining issues, which are the townhouse height as a transition between the four-story apartments and the single-family residential, having effective buffers in that area and stormwater management. And I think hopefully we can do that all in a way that doesn't materially impact the density that's being sought here, which is the key factor that this was found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that being housing supply. So I want to thank the council members in advance for their thoughtful consideration on this case, and also Councilors Knight, Buffkin, and Milton, who I spoke with, was able to speak with, for encouraging discussion, listening to concerns, and working to find solutions here. And I think that they're, I think they exist, so thank you very much.
On the opposition. Beth?
Yeah, Andy, who would you like to go to next?
Oh, if we could go to Sean Sauer, and if you could pull my, I have, a couple of folks would like to use my presentation as exhibits.
Sean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name's Sean Sowers. I'm a homeowner at 4636 Timberhurst Drive in the Laurel Brook subdivision. Our property borders the middle of the proposed parcel's south edge. I'm also a registered architect practicing in this community for over 20 years. This is a challenging site with respect to the severity of the existing grades, and thank you, Councilmember Cox, for the question about the extent of those slopes. Please go to the next slide. I created these diagrams to help illustrate the existing grade conditions, and please note that north is up on the page. The south property line has over 60 feet of fall from Durley Road to the properties on Balsam Drive. The east proper line rises more than 30 feet to a knob at the midpoint, then falls another 100 feet down to Crabtree Creek. These existing grades make development on the south and east sides of the property especially impactful to the existing neighborhoods. The next slide shows the grades overlaid with the proposed zoning conditions. The brown zone shows where the townhouses may be located, spanning right across those falling and rising grades along the south and east edges. The fourth zoning condition says that buildings shall be no more than 68 feet in height. This would allow four-story townhouse buildings up to 68 feet high. I understand that the applicant may also propose the condition that creates the 55-foot setback from the single-family parcels, which we do appreciate. The next slide helps conceptualize the potential height mismatch between communities, especially between the proposed townhouses and the existing single-family homes as that grade changes. This shows potential retaining wall conditions, but the natural grades would also create similar elevation changes. Our property may be like the base condition shown here, though my home is a single-story. The Balsam Drive homes, however, sit further downhill, and the elevation changes there could range from 10 to 30 feet following the existing grade lines. The UDO allows building heights to increase above 40 feet at a one-to-one ratio beyond the 50-foot setback. The red dashed lines shown here on these diagrams show how the townhouse buildings could increase in height up to 68 feet under condition number four. We are unclear if trees would adequately screen that kind of height change. Thank you for your time, and please support our community in obtaining reasonable, effective protections from this intense and not entirely compatible use coming to a lower-density residential community. Thank you.
Andy, who would you like to go to next?
How much time do we have remaining? I want to make sure that Chris Hagerty of City of Oaks has an opportunity to speak.
Just under three minutes.
Yeah.
If Tip could speak for one minute, and that leaves two minutes for Mr. Hagerty. Tip, Illyucci?
There we go. Hi there, this is, I'm Thomas Illyucci, also known as Tip. I am at 4109 Balsam Drive, and I appreciate the opportunity from Mayor and the council members to speak. I just wanted to point out that the residents of Laurel Hills and Laurel Hills West have always had stormwater concerns. Around 2016, there were a number of community meetings to address some of that. Engineers came out and met with us. Couple of years later, I think last year, 2019, project was funded on Juniper Street, and the dam was rebuilt on Laurel Hills Road. So a lot of neighbors were wondering why more wasn't addressed, and they're curious as to the impact of stormwater to the community. We appreciate your consideration and for listening, and thank you very much. We'll take it over to Chris now.
Yeah, I think the rest of the time would give to Chris Hagerty.
Go ahead, Chris.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'm Chris Hagerty with the City of Oaks Foundation, and as you've heard, we own the conservation property adjacent to the applicant located at 4318 Zelia Drive. Now, this is the same conservation property that I talked to all of you about earlier this week, that was just recognized by the state for its special ecological value. I want to thank Councilor Knight for coming out to visit the property and seeing these conditions firsthand, and for everybody trying to work together to come to a solution here. You know, even though this property is located in District E, this is a citywide issue. The property is set up, as you heard, on the streets, steep slopes over Crabtree Creek. And as you know, the creek runs through the entire city from District D all the way to District C, and so the impacts here can affect everybody downstream. But there's also an issue of interconnectivity with the greenway, which is between our conservation property and our work with the city to help expand the capital area greenway. These are our two concerns really about the project. With greenway planning, you have to have careful and deliberate work, and we've had years of planning and coordination with the city for how to build the greenway safely along Crabtree Creek since we first obtained the property. Yeah, I'll mention, as you heard, this came out of planning commission with a, you know, at first the vote was tied, and then it came out without a recommendation. While they found that the plan, you know, was consistent with the comprehensive plan, it was found to be inconsistent with other important city policies about buffering inadequate neighborhood transitions, planning process for large sites, and the greenway-oriented development. Current version of the project threatens our conservation project property with a public street to the middle of the woods and an 80-foot drop, threatens Crabtree Creek, and the developer's original greenway condition is inconsistent with all of our greenway planning to date. But the good news is there are easy fixes to all of these things, and we can still move forward with residential development on the property. If we can take this project back, you can protect the creek, the neighbors, and our property by having some modest conditions here, a modest natural buffer separating the new construction and excavation from the steep slopes over the creek, from the neighbors' homes, giving them a little bit of a buffer there with their height and with the natural buffer, and rejecting the original greenway condition in favor of a one consistent with the city greenway policy that I believe the applicant is currently working on. They can get to build their housing, we can minimize the environmental impact, and you don't have to undo.
Thank you, Chris. I allowed y'all to go over some because the other side went over a little bit there. The mayor had to step away, so I have it at this time. I believe that concludes the hearing, public hearing portion of this. I'm going to bring it back to council for any, for council deliberation and questions. Councilman Knight?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to start with the preface that I will not be making a motion to vote on this rezoning case tonight. At the proper time, I will be recommending to, to hold this, I guess you'd say, hearing open until September 15th, and then I'll talk about more details about that as we get to it. First of all, I want to thank all the parties involved in this rezoning cases, as it's been stated by everybody that's spoken, it's a challenging piece of property, and it's a challenging case. I want to thank the neighbors, both on Timberhurst and Zelia, and the other neighbors in the area as well, that have continued to raise their concerns and talk about the issues that are important to them. So I appreciate that. I appreciate Mr. Pettish representing some of those neighbors, working with us, as well as Chris Hagerty of City of Oaks Foundation, and the city staff who's been working on this as well very hard, and I appreciate that. Especially want to thank Ms. Schwedler, who has been continuing to work on this over this year-long process, this year-long public process, to work with and respond to the neighbors and staff, and their attorneys, as well as me, who've had a lot of questions. And I appreciate that in particular. This development will create, if it goes through a big change to this area, and in particular, this piece of property, it is 26 acres of mature forest in an otherwise developed area within the Hanson Quarry across the road and down the hill from it. I have been out to the site and visited and walked it two times. I've driven through the neighborhoods multiple times. I have met with the neighbors virtually on Zoom. I think there were 12 participants on that call, have talked to the neighbor's attorney, Mr. Pettish, and then obviously multiple times been talking to Ms. Schwedler, the developer's attorney. So I think I know the situation very well, and again, it is a challenging one, and that's why it's taken so long to get to this point. There are, as you can see from the map, eight home sites that are adjacent to the site, all, you could say downhill in a way, and then, and then the City of Oaks property in the corner down by, by the creek. So I want to talk and ask Ms. Schwedler, and I believe she said her engineer was on, about some specific areas of concern by the neighbors, but also areas of concern of mine. My main focus, being out there, seeing the mature forest there and seeing the buffer. And to remind folks, when you look at the map, uphill, which is actually south, there is, the next piece of property is a retirement home, a senior living home. I believe it's three stories, it's either two or three stories. And then when you go downhill, obviously across the creek, the next developments are multifamily housing. Then you got a quarry across and down on the other side of the road, and then up the road on the other side, you do have more multifamily housing. But this has been like it, undisturbed for many, many years. So I want to talk about the buffer issue and, and what you were looking to do for this buffer issue in relation to... buffer issue in relation to conditions, and the point that I've been trying to get as, if we can leave as much of that mature woods, forest back there, I think that would be very helpful. So I want to talk, you talk about that, Ms. Wedler, and then, which gets to the height issue and the view shed from the neighbors onto the back, the southeast corner, onto the back of the development. Also, I'd like to hear more about the requirements that you have to meet for stormwater, and if, and how you're going to meet these requirements, and if and how you see these being possibly better, the same, or worse for the neighbors downhill. If you could start there, I would appreciate that, Ms. Wedler.
Do we have the attorney, Jamie?
Sorry. Let me get Jamie back on. Go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you. I'm happy to do that, Councilmember Knight. Would you like me to start with the stormwater?
Why don't you start with the, the height issue with the buffers, please?
Sure. I'll start with the buffers themselves, because early on, that's, you know, in our first neighborhood meeting, that was what the primary concern was, is kind of how would this look from the rear of these property, the property lines? And so that's why we took the initiative before we filed to add in the conditions about setting the apartments back and having that more intense use closer to the road, and then committing to that type-three buffer, the 50-foot buffer. Now, that requirement in the code doesn't have to be committed to at zoning, but when you do, it has a prescriptive amount of planting that has to go in that 50-foot wide area. And due to the challenges of the grading out there, we heard a lot about, you know, what would be seen or what would be looked at, and looked at whether we could preserve a portion of that to be the natural area. So when we looked out what we could do, we, the new condition would add, in addition to that 50-foot planting, 25 feet of it would be the natural buffer that exists there today. And that's average, because there are a lot of slopes on that southeastern corner. Not all of them are sloped to property owners that are downhill. So the Timberhurst folks, some of their property is actually above our property, but as you get to the Balsam Drive, it does sit below. And so the new condition will allow, would require us to keep half of that 50-foot planted yard as natural. And what that does in terms of screening is that the trees out there are very mature, and so it gives you a good buffer that they enjoy today and a significant amount of undergrowth as well. And then behind that, it would be on us to make sure we could meet that full planting requirement of the type-three yard, all of that material as you, as you slope up to, to meet where the, the 50-foot mark would be. The other new condition for the retaining walls clarifies that we would not place any retaining walls within that 50-foot buffer as well. So not only would you have the natural buffer and then the planted material, then you'd have all of that before you get to the, to the retaining wall. And then you would have the closest townhome be five feet back from that. But under our code, at that 50-foot mark, a building could only be 40 feet tall, because it's in a mixed-use district. So in order for us to reach the 68-feet maximum, and it is a maximum, it's not, not necessarily going to build townhomes at 68 feet. But as you know, the city has changed how they've measured height calculations over time, and we have to make sure we're meeting those requirements. But if we were to reach that maximum, the 68 feet, we would essentially have to be another 28 feet back from that 50-foot line to get from the 40 to the 68-foot total. So what you'd be looking at is your, your 68-foot building would actually be 78 feet back from the property line if we wanted to build the full height. If we wanted to build smaller, if we wanted to be closer to the property line, we would have to build smaller, and that's, that's something we're going to have to comply with at site plan. So those, those combinations working together, I think, really meet the consistency statement of the appropriate buffers and transitions that weren't part of the case at Planning Commission when the recommendation came through. The other thing that it does is help with stormwater. So when you have, right now, the, you know, I think you heard Mr. Illyucci note that there's been some stormwater issues over the site in years gone by, as it is today as a natural state. And that's because, due to the slope, everything is sheet draining off of that property to this, to the north and the east. And so what those folks are experiencing is no stormwater control whatsoever on a vacant parcel. Under the code, we would be required to treat all disturbed areas, every drop of water that is hitting a disturbed area, and retain it, and then release it slowly over time after we have treated it. So not only will the quality of the stormwater be better post-development, but the quantity will not be sheeting off in the volumes that it is today. That natural buffer will also naturally help increase the pervious area and the percolation rate adjacent to those areas. So where the folks have lots of volume coming off adjacent to their site, they only have a minimal amount of rain that has been able to be absorbed within that 25-foot natural buffer. So it really helps us to accomplish a lot of things with those combinations of the new conditions.
Thank you very much for that. I think that's very helpful, that explanation. The other two, the other issue is the access to the greenway. We know there, the future Crabtree Creek Greenway is going to come through there, which is very exciting for everybody living in that area, really the whole city, as people talked before about how this is, this is an important area to the whole city. So that'll be exciting. And I, and I think the first condition you put forward that would have gone on the sort of the backside or east side, that would have allowed access through the City of Oaks Foundation down to, to the green, the future greenway and the creek. Both, I think the, the foundation, and don't want to speak for Chris, but I think he said us, they really wouldn't, it wouldn't be usable or viable, and I think the city staff thought the same thing. So I appreciate the idea of trying to find access and moving it back towards Durley Road. And if you would talk about that condition, the new condition that you've added, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. We're happy to. And that's an issue that we, we provided the public pedestrian access to the City of Oaks as kind of a fall safe if we weren't able to work out this direct connection to the greenway. But now that we are, we think that's a more direct route, much more preferable route for, for both our residents and pedestrians alike going from Durley Road down to the greenway. And so, as I mentioned in the presentation, there's some significant slope area down there, existing easements. We're trying to keep as much of the tree conservation area as we can, and in order to do that, we are willing to make that connection in a path that's not required to be ADA accessible. And the reason that we're including that provision is that you saw on the screen how much land area a switchback just directly on the other side of Durley can take up. And that not only impacts the grading of the site, pushing dirt further up the hill and disturbing more area than, than we'd prefer to do, but it also impacts the amount of trees that are impacted in the existing canopy there. So instead of making a large area and swath with a, a switchback, we prefer to do that with a simple pedestrian connection. And we have worked both with planning staff and Parks and Rec staff, as well as Development Services, to preview that condition, all four of the conditions that I read into the record tonight. And while they're not formally submitted and have formal comments, we did receive feedback and kind of pushed and pulled those, and they were deemed ready for me to kind of announce tonight. So we look forward to any other feedback the staff has, but they have had the opportunity to review it.
Thank you, Ms. Wedler. The last thing I would suggest is when we take this back up on September 15th, if you could provide some photos or, and/or renderings or drawings to sort of, sort of show how this looks. We saw what with Ms. Sauer showed. I think if y'all could show some more as what it would look like from the back of, of the development, that would be great, and just be able to show what, what folks, what the townhouse type of design that y'all are talking about and thinking about would be helpful. And I get that the grading and slope piece of it is, you're not there yet until you get to the site plan, and, but anything that would show us visually, I think would be helpful to everybody. So I would appreciate that and suggest that as well. And again, thank you for continuing to work with all the stakeholders on these proposed conditions. Two issues of concern that I do want to be brought up that can't be solved here, that I'm disappointed that this is, there's not mixed-use components to this development. I, I think that is, you know, speaking for myself, a priority of developments of this size, and I'm disappointed that that's not part of this, and if you want to speak to that, Ms. Wedler. And then lastly, which, which confounded me when it was discussed, well, it was told to me that I think under the UDO, that a primary tree conservation area for this type of development on a, on a, on a road like Durley, a thoroughfare, there has to be trees, a tree conservation area between the development and the road or in sidewalk, which I actually think is, which calls, which forces the development to be pushed back, which towards the neighbors on the backside, which is just something that's, was, didn't make sense to me, and is something that I want to look at in our UDO, because if we're trying to move, I would think, developments towards the road, towards the sidewalk, to get people more out in front. So I was saying that's something for us to look at. Obviously, the tree conservation area has to be there, but is that the best place to, 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 to place it? I think that's something of, of interest in mind to be looking at as we move forward. With that, I will stop, and I will make a motion or recommendation, recommendation at the proper time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Buckland?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to commend Councilmember Knight on all the work he's put into this. It's obvious he's been very thorough in his preparation and careful about considering all the issues. I took an interest in this case because of the greenway issues, and I'm very pleased to hear that conversations are going well. And I'm also very invested in the success of the City of Oaks Foundation. It's a wonderful organization that does a lot of really great things partnering with our parks, and this is a really special piece of property. Mr. Hagerty mentioned in his comments that it's just received a state designation, and there's a beautiful waterfall on the property. So I, like I said, I took an interest in this, and I'm really pleased to see the progress and the positive conversation that's going on, and I look forward to hearing Mr. Knight's recommendation for the council. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to leave this open. So is that a formal motion, Madam Mayor?
I have a question.
Councilor?
Councilor Knight, if you, for, in order for them to put the conditions in, it has to be closed. But if you want to leave it open to have conversation, you, we can, and then at the next meeting, we'll have to close it, and then it will have to come back again.
That's right. So we have agreed to, the parties have agreed to allow it to be left open, to continue to work on the conditions till September 15th is when we will then close it, and then I would ask for it to be voted on October the 6th, is what my request is, and I can put that in the form of a motion if need be.
So, City Attorney, I have to close the hearing. Or leave it open?
Leave it, the motion is to leave it?
Until September 15th. Okay. All right.
And then close it, and then they'll do the conditions after September 15th and come back for the vote at the next one. Is that correct, Bynum?
So that is a motion by Councilor Knight. Do we have a second? Second by Councilor Branch? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. That was unanimous, Clerk. It's obvious there's some work to be done, but I really like the way this, the cooperative nature of the discussions. So thank you, Councilor Knight, for your involvement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to all the parties for continuing to work on this. I think we can get to a good place for the, for the city and the, and the neighbors to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z5019-913, Method Road. This is District D.
That's right. Our third case this evening is a small parcel on Method Road. This is a rezoning from a residential district to neighborhood mixed-use, which would be similar to surrounding zoning on the east side of Method Road. So the parcel is just under a quarter of an acre, going from R10 with the Special Residential Parking Overlay District, which would be retained, to NX3. It is consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission recommended approval. You can see here the site is just north of Western Boulevard, on the east side of Method Road and south of Jackson Street, and there's a shopping center setback from Western Boulevard that backs up to this site. Zoom in there, so there's a single-family house on the property now, and here's some views of the site from Method Road. You can see there's multifamily adjacent and a single-family house adjacent. This is a general use request, so there are no conditions offered. The change in entitlement here would increase the number of allowed units, almost quadrupling it, or I'm sorry, not quite quadrupling it, and add some office and retail entitlement that's not currently present. So consistent with the neighborhood mixed-use designation on the future land use map, there's no frontage offered here, which would make it, if it were to be offered, would make it consistent with the urban form map. It is consistent overall with the comprehensive plan, even though it is inconsistent with urban form. A number of consistent policies were identified. That frontage, absence of frontage in the offer makes it inconsistent with frontage-related policies in the plan, and the Planning Commission recommends approval. What questions could I answer for you before you open the public hearing?
Bynum, could you? Thank you. Any questions? Okay. I'm going to open the hearing. We have one person who has signed up to speak and support, Allison Pocket. Is Allison on the line?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Allison. We can hear you.
Hi. This is a quarter acre. I'm a landscape architect, and my address is 106 Deep Bang Drive. Sorry about that. Cary, North Carolina. This is a quarter acre, slightly less than a quarter acre lot, that is entirely surrounded on three sides by a neighborhood mixed-use zoning. So it seems as though it was one lot that was somewhat left behind. Immediately across the street is the same R10 zoning. So this would be basically making this side of the street all neighborhood mixed-use. We did hold a, we did offer to hold a neighborhood meeting. We had the place rented, and we waited for an hour, and nobody showed up, so I'm guessing the neighborhood didn't really care. Other than that, it did go to Planning Commission. It bounced around a while, mostly because it was always at the bottom of the agenda, and they never quite got to it. Available to answer any questions that you might have concerning this case.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilor Ford?
According to the documents, I'll be making a motion to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated September 1st, 2020, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with adoption and effective dates described in the agenda under the record of action.
Okay. Councilman Melton has seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, Clerk, that was unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z5119-3700 and 3800 Glenwood Avenue and 3710 Exchange Glenwood Place. Place. We have two people in support, Michael Birch and Gordon Grub, and none opposed. So, Bynum, could you give us a quick overview of this case?
This is just under 18 acres, and there's a combination of zoning districts in place that would be replaced with neighborhood mixed-use and, and commercial mixed-use, a combination of five and seven stories across the site, and CM would remain in place. This is inconsistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. Nonetheless, planning commission recommends approval. I see my slides coming. They're, they're going to be here soon. Can we go? Oh, here we go. So the site is on the east side of Glenwood Avenue. There's new development here and existing development and some in process. A couple of views of the site. So you have two parcels right up on Glenwood Avenue, and then Glenwood Exchange Place, which is a setback from the street some and is home to relatively new multifamily construction. There are conditions that apply to the parcels on Glenwood Avenue exclusively, so limiting the residential density, limiting the number of buildings, and then the amount of structured parking, and then limiting the size of the buildings if they don't include structured parking, limiting height, with the exception of telecommunication towers, which must be screened, and also elevator operation, limiting hours of operation for personal service, eating establishment, bar, nightclub tavern, and retail sales, and then limiting or prohibiting live performance on a dance floor on those same parcels. So these are those two parcels right up on Glenwood Avenue. And then finally, limiting the location of particular uses to only on the ground floor of those buildings. And then the 3700 Glenwood Avenue, which is the southern site, which is largely developed already, prohibiting indoor recreation, with the exception of a handful of uses, and then prohibiting vehicle-related uses. On the 3710 Glen, Exchange Glenwood Place, so that sort of interior parcel that has the multifamily building on it, limiting hours of operation for a handful of uses, prohibiting some uses, and then specifying the location of particular uses in that building to the ground floor. So the entitlement change here is, the big change is an increase in retail. The office square footage and the maximum number of units is not changing. This is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, so they've asked for neighborhood mixed-use and commercial mixed-use, and the future land use map designation here is largely office and residential mixed-use. So neighborhood mixed-use and commercial mixed-use, that, those zoning districts allow a range of uses not contemplated by the office and residential mixed-use designation on the future land use map. A little bit of a disconnect there. And then they have offered no frontage, which makes the request inconsistent with the urban form map, and as a result, inconsistent overall with the comprehensive plan. So there are consistent policies, but there are also inconsistent policies which tips it so that it is not consistent with the plan. And if approved, this would amend the future land use map to reflect that more intense set of uses. So the neighborhood mixed-use portion of the site on future land use map would be changed to commercial mixed-use, and the office and residential mixed-use designation would shift to neighborhood mixed-use to reflect the uses allowed by the request. What questions could I answer for you before you open the public hearing?
Are there any questions? Counselor Cox?
Yes, regarding the conditions related to dance floor and live performances, is that for outside or inside?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. So the bar nightclub tavern lounge use shall not have live performance, performances or a dance floor. Think the way that's worded, it would prohibit those uses, interior or exterior.
Are there any conditions related to outdoor amplified music? Or any outdoor amplified anything?
I don't believe that's addressed specifically. So the live performance and dance floor are prohibited just across the board, whether or not it's indoor or outdoor. But I, I don't believe they've prohibited amplified music indoor or outdoor. I think that'd be a better question for the applicant.
Okay. And then another question is, even though this was filed in 2019, I take it there was no CAC meeting on this?
No, sir, there was not a CAC meeting. There was a neighborhood meeting in December of last year, but there was no CAC meeting. So I don't think they had made the move to be in front of the CAC before they were in front of planning commission in March of, late, late March of earlier this year.
Okay, and they did not have a second neighborhood meeting?
No, sir, that would not have been required, because they were, they filed well before the second neighborhood meeting requirement was established in the code.
Okay.
Any additional questions before I open the hearing? Okay, we'll open the hearing now. And Beth, could you get Michael Birch?
Great. Good evening, mayors. Michael Birch, can you hear me?
Yes, Michael, we can.
Wonderful. This is Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners, 4509 Creedmore Road, Suite 302. Before, I have Gordon Grub with me this evening, and before I turn it over to him for a brief kind of background and introduction, I do just want to note in response to one of Counselor Cox's questions regarding the CAC, we did go to the CAC on February 24th. So that was right after the council action. There was over 200 people, it felt like, at this meeting. We presented, and they took a vote, and it was 21 to 7 in favor. So we did go to the CAC, received a favorable vote. We also had a very productive neighborhood meeting with those owners immediately adjacent who, you know, have been involved with this property for a number of years. So just wanted to address that. I'll address your question about outdoor amplified music after Mr. Grub gives a brief introduction. So Beth, if you could unmute, unmute Gordon Grub.
Will do.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Gordon.
Okay, I'm Gordon Grub with Grub Ventures, 3700 Glenwood Avenue. We bought the old Cogar Center over 20 years ago, which is a replica of 70s vintage suburban office parks that were stamped out all across the country. And since then, we've been slowly transforming it into a thoughtfully planned mixed-use community known as Glenwood Place. In 2005, we rezoned the 3700 and 3800 Glenwood parcels and built the 3700 Glenwood Office Building. In 2018, we built the Sojourne Glenwood Place Apartments, which is 296 apartment homes with retail. And then we have just completed the 3800 Glenwood Office Building and Retail. So our goal here is really to provide walkable food and beverage and retail service options. We're already approved for retail, but we really need more flexibility to provide the uses and spaces that our tenants and residents want. We also want to provide dining and service retail that our neighbors can access from the adjacent greenway. So we've tailored the rezoning very narrow in response to our meetings with neighbors. In fact, the noise was an issue that came up, and so we agreed to, for everything to close at 11 o'clock. At Glenwood Place, we've, so far, we've developed buildings with exceptional architecture, high-quality materials. We've curated an impressive collection of North Carolina art. We have a couple of outdoor sculptures that'll be coming, being installed soon. We've done extensive landscaping of native plantings throughout. And so our goal is really to make Glenwood Place one of Raleigh's most desirable mixed-use communities. So just want to thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you, Gordon. And Bynum, if it's possible, if you could put that last slide of your presentation up just while I'm, I'm speaking. So just to piggyback on what Gordon noted, that these properties are currently zoned OX, and those two parcels along Glenwood were actually zoned to OX back in 2005 to allow for six-story buildings. There are also, there's a, there's a height limit, there's also a floor area limit. We tried not to change those old conditions at all, except to kind of bring it up into compliance with the, with the UDO. But we, we left that height limitation in place. We left the building size limitation in place. And so really, the intent of this is for a very targeted change to allow for retail and restaurant and kind of bar taproom options on the property. The issue is really created by the women's club property that's zoned residential, even though it's not a residential use. But the OX standards don't allow us to have a restaurant in a building within 150 feet of a residential district, regardless of what the use is. So that impacts both the 3710 Exchange apartment property, as well as the 3700 Office Building. And then we wanted to allow for a taproom use on the office building that's coming online, and with more than just eight outdoor seats. And so that is why we've allowed more than eight outdoor seats, but have added the other use limitations, like the no dance floor and the no live performances, which are, you know, existing limitations within the OX district. So we're trying to change as, as little as possible, but to allow for these uses on the ground floor of these existing buildings to serve, again, the occupants, the residents, as well as nearby neighbors. Just wanted to check my time here. So we understand that we are inconsistent, but we think that the request is reasonable and in the public interest, because this case does include many conditions that mitigate any possible impacts. The hours of operation limit, the use limitations, height and ground floor limitation. Sorry. And it also allows restaurant, taproom uses to serve the occupants and residents of the development, reducing the need to, for vehicles to get out on Glenwood Avenue. And it provides these uses and walking distance to the neighborhood as well. Just to touch on, I believe, a question from Counselor Cox regarding outdoor amplification. So that is something that's not really governed by the, the UDO on, for any uses, really. The, it's handled by Chapter 12 of the city code. There is nothing about this zoning case that changes what's allowed or not allowed. I will just say, my read of the code is, you know, outdoor amplification's not permitted at all on the 3710 property, which is where that new apartment building is, given its distance from Glenwood Avenue. And any outdoor amplification on the two office building properties would require seeking a special use permit from the city council, which would obviously require a public hearing and notice of nearby owners. There's no, you know, plan for that. Again, we just really want kind of the outdoor dining and taproom option there. But I did want to make clear, there's nothing about this rezoning that is changing anything with regard to outdoor amplification. So with that, myself and Gordon are both here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Counselor Knight?
At the proper time, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I will close the hearing then. Counselor Knight?
I think this is the type of mixed-use we're all interested in. I think this is a no-brainer, and I will make a motion to approve. I move to adopt?
Go on, sorry.
Start, okay. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated September 1, 2020, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action. This approval is also deemed an amendment to the 2030 comprehensive plan and the future land use map, to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Do I have a second? Counselor Stewart? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Clerk, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next, we have rezoning Z 5319, 5512 and 5514 Thornton Road in District B. We have two people speaking in support, and six who have signed up to speak who are opposed. Okay, Bynum?
Thank you. This is a request to rezone just over 15 acres from Residential 4, which is allows four units per acre, to Residential 10, which would allow 10, 10 units per acre, but it has been conditioned down. There's some other conditions on the site. The planning commission, this did appear before the Northeast CAC, and they voted to recommend denial, and by a split vote, the planning commission recommends approval. You can see the site outlined in black here. It's an unusual shape. It's currently R 4, and you can see it has R 4 adjacent to it in some areas, and also R 6, and R 10, and also R 10 with conditions, conditioned down to only eight units per acre, but the R 10 dimension, lot dimensions and development patterns are still permitted. So a good aerial view of the site. This is also adjacent to the city's Thornton Road property, which will be developed as a public park at some point in the future. Couple of views of the site from Thornton Road, Neuse Forest Road, and Brambleberry Way. The conditions here limit density to seven and a half dwelling units per acre, also limits the number of dwelling units within a single building. So in the event of building townhouses, for example, they'd be limited to the number of units contiguous, prohibits use of adjacent neighborhood streets by construction vehicles, prohibits most non-residential uses and most residential uses other than household living, prohibits the apartment building type, and requires development to include stormwater control measures for a 25-year storm, in addition to the typical two- and 10-year requirements of the UDO. They also have made a provision for a landscape yard along the northwest property boundary and along the southeast boundary, and they have prohibited an extension of Neuse Forest Road from connecting directly to Thornton Road. So they're not saying they won't build a road, but that they would not make a full-on, full-aligned intersection. Also limited the height of townhouses to 35 feet, and requires a 15% open space set aside, in addition to other requirements of the UDO. The residential density would increase here to seven and a half units per acre, with a maximum number of units of 114. You can see that the setbacks all stepped down a little bit because of the change in the, just the lot requirements of R 10 are different than R 4, so a smaller lot size requirement and a smaller setback requirement. This is inconsistent with the low-density residential designation, because it allows density and a building type that are not envisioned by the low-density designation on the future land use map. There's no urban form designation here. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, even though it is consistent with the future land use map, a number of consistent policies identified by staff, and a handful of inconsistent policies, largely that future land use map designation and associated policies that... and associated policies that come along with that. It would require an amendment to the future land use map, so this area would change from low-density residential and future land use map to moderate density, which envisions up to 14 units per acre. And you can see adjacent to the park here, again, Planning Commission did recommend approval by a split vote, and the Forestville CAC recommended denial back in February before you took your action. What questions could I answer for you before you open the public hearing on this case?
Counselor Cox?
I don't really have a question, but one of the, hold on, give me one second. I know that one of the residents, Jean Hayden, is speaking for several people, and I was wondering if he could go first.
We usually have the applicant speak first.
Well, I mean, when the opposed side speaks, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, I will open the hearing. And if we could have, there's Catherine McPherson and Cameron Jones who have signed up.
I think, Mayor, we were gonna start with Catherine.
Okay.
Start with Cameron.
You want to start with Cameron? Okay.
Yes, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Cameron Jones, and I work for Terramore Homes in the Land Acquisition and Entitlements. We're a family-oriented company comprised primarily of local individuals who live in or around the communities we develop. We all have a passion for helping people and building sustainable communities that stand the test of time, because at the end of the day, our primary goal is to turn each person's or family's vision of the American dream into reality. And it is those dreams that we envision when we put this land into contract. The land as it exists today are two parent parcels totaling approximately 26 acres towards the end of Thornton Road. The current owners, who are still active residents of the community, desired only to sell portions of the property while retaining their current homesteads. This is why you notice the oddly shaped rezoning line. Both parcels were originally owned by the Thornton family, as they were one of the first residents to this area many years ago, hence the name of the road, Thornton Road. And properties have been in the family ever since. In fact, much of the now-developed land surrounding them was sold off over the years for development by the family. Together, the sellers, ourselves, our consultants, have been maneuvering through the rezoning process since our first neighborhood meeting back in November. As you can see from the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval, and we'll hear in more detail from our consultant's presentation, we feel as though we have listened, understood, and adequately addressed the concerns of the community, and have included conditions to reflect that in this proposal before you. And with that, I'll pass this along to Adam Ashbaugh, our land planning and engineering consultant, to continue with more detail.
Thank you, Cameron. Good evening, Mayor Baldwin, and members of the city council. We have a presentation. Unfortunately, we had a technical difficulty. I tried to sign up separately, but Cameron and I are in an office together. So if we can get our presentation pulled up, I'll kind of go through more of the technical aspects of the proposal. While we're waiting for the presentation to come up, I'll just go ahead and introduce myself. My name is Adam Ashbaugh. I'm a civil engineer and a certified planner with the consulting firm ESP Associates here in Raleigh, and I'm here today representing the applicant, Terramore Homes. Wanted to thank you all for your time this evening in light of the serious issues facing our city, and to thank Cameron for his brief introduction to Terramore Homes. I guess while we're waiting for the presentation, I'll recap a little bit of the history of our public outreach and interaction with the neighboring property owners, which has been significant. Despite the challenges of interacting directly with property owners and interested individuals during this pandemic, we're proud of the public interaction we've undertaken in this case, and how our proposed rezoning and accompanying conditions have evolved in deference to input from adjacent property owners, feedback that we received from the Planning Commission, and guidance from the city staff. I'm only seeing a blank screen. I don't know if you guys are seeing our presentation or not. Doesn't-
No, we, we don't, we're not seeing it.
Okay. So I guess we're waiting for the clerk, or we're waiting for somebody to pull up our presentation? Oh, here we go. Here we go. Before the abolishment of the citizen advisory council meetings, the project was presented to the public in both a neighborhood meeting and two separate CAC meetings. We took into account the feedback from those meetings when formulating our proposed conditions, and we further modified these conditions during the past few months of hearings with the Planning Commission, based upon their guidance, and continued email dialogue with the neighboring property owners. As mentioned in the staff report, the proposed rezoning is consistent with several policies outlined in the Comprehensive Plan, namely conditional use district, compact neighborhood development, reinforcing the urban pattern, a density transition, housing variety, and infill and rezoning, and zoning for housing. If we could go to the next slide. This slide shows the project developed within the immediate area over the last 20 years, and it confirms our consistency with surrounding development densities. The predominance of subdivisions in this area have developed with densities between six to 12 dwelling units per acre. Although we are requesting an R10 zoning classification, we have included condition number one with our request, to cap the development density at seven and a half units per acre or 114 units. We've also included conditions four and five to clarify the types of uses to be prohibited, limiting our development to the residential attached townhome product, which Terramore intends to build here. This slide also clearly demonstrates our consistency with the Comprehensive Plan goal of transition of uses and densities, utilizing sound planning strategies as we provide a slightly higher density and buffering neighborhood between the existing Castleberry and Park at Perry Creek subdivisions to the existing waste transfer site that's located along the north side of Thornton Road, and the future City of Raleigh Park site that's going to be located to the east of this property. This slide also shows the intended realignment and extension of Thornton Road that's contemplated in the city's future transportation plan. If we'll go to the next slide, you'll see a little more close, you'll see a little more closely view of the property itself, and you can again see how the location of this property lends itself as a transition between the two existing neighborhoods to the South and West, and the future City Park and Waste Transfer Station to the North and East. The creation of additional housing types and appropriate densities within walking distance to the future park is, again, another demonstration of sound planning practices that this project provides. This slide also shows the existing street stubs from those existing neighborhoods, which are required to be extended by virtue of the city's Comprehensive Plan. Condition number nine has been provided to address adjacent property owner concerns over connections to and extensions of these street stubs, which I'll address in just a little bit. Next slide shows, if we can advance it, this slide shows project location within the context of planned transportation improvements in the area by both DOT and the City of Raleigh, which I'm sure you're probably already aware of. So I'll skip past this slide in the interest of preserving time. So skip one more slide, if you will, because this is just the cross-section out of the Comprehensive Plan. So this slide shows the clarification of our proposed condition number three, which not only restricts construction traffic to access the site from Thornton Road, but also some clarity on condition number seven regarding the buffer adjacent to the Park at Perry Creek subdivision. The existing access easement and gravel driveway serving the property to be sold and developed will be abandoned and revegetated in accordance with this condition, with alternate access to the portions of these properties retained by the sellers to be provided through new roadways established within the proposed development. Next slide, please. This slide provides a graphic representation of the proposed condition number eight regarding the buffer abutting the Castleberry subdivision. This slide and condition that we've offered is a good example of the coordination that occurred between adjacent property owners in Terramore, whereby we're now offering both a privacy fence and a 32-foot-wide tree conservation area or vegetated buffer, abutting this shared property line, out of consideration for email correspondence and feedback we heard from the neighbors there. Next slide, please. This slide provides a graphic that illustrates the intent of that proposed condition number nine, which is offered in direct response to safety concerns from existing property owners along News Forest Road, within the Park at Perry Creek subdivision, in coordination with City of Raleigh transportation staff. We originally proposed a condition that would either eliminate or create a pedestrian-only connection here, but we were informed by staff that such a condition would be inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The next slide, if you don't mind. Real quick, I just have two more conditions if I could get, little request to extend our time because of the difficulty with this presentation. One thing we heard from city staff, as well as residents to the south of this property, is there are issues with the previously installed stormwater system within the Castleberry subdivision. So in an effort to alleviate any concerns about our project impacting this existing condition, we provided this condition that the total volume of runoff toward both the Park at Perry Creek and Castleberry existing subdivisions will be reduced from the pre-development rates, and that our project stormwater design will be evaluated based upon the 25-year, 24-hour storm event, which exceeds city stormwater design standards. The internal runoff will be captured, diverted, and routed to onsite stormwater control measures for treatment and attenuation. Next slide addresses some of the environmental concerns, and with regard to committed open space, we've addressed a specific Planning Commission request for an increase of open spaces and site aesthetics. So to that end, we added this condition, which commits 15% open space within the project, or one and a half times the amount required by city code. Last slide, if you don't mind. Another concern that we heard from Planning Commission was that of the massing of the buildings in the proposed development. So condition number two, which limits each individual building to no more than six dwelling units, and condition number 10, which limits the maximum height of buildings, were added with respect to those concerns. I think these conditions go hand-in-hand with the buffering requests from adjacent property owners reflected in the conditions that I previously discussed. And so that will minimize the impact of this new community on existing properties and residents of the area. That really covers the proposed rezoning and conditions offered to demonstrate good neighborhood design and thoughtful planning. And again, we thank you for hearing our proposal for the site, as we seek to provide additional housing opportunities within the City of Raleigh, and are more than happy to answer any remaining questions you may have as we seek your approval of this request.
Okay, thank you. We're going to hear from the opposition next. Counselor Cox, you'd asked for Jean Hayden to be called upon to speak on behalf of several residents. So if I could ask Beth to get Jean on?
Can you hear me, Beth?
Yes, we can.
Good. Are you ready?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. I would like to have you look at the next visual, please, if you go to that one. It shows the Thornton property that was shown during the previous presentation, and the Park at Perry Creek is our subdivision just to the west of that. Specifically, I want to address the city policy of connecting streets between developments, specifically News Forest Road. We, like any good policy, there's times when an exception is warranted, and we believe this is such the case. The next visual expands this view to all of News Forest Road, highlighting the yellow printing, showing you where News Forest Road is. It's a narrow residential street with cars parked on both sides, overseeing one-way traffic at those multiple locations. It terminates at a dangerous intersection with Wildwood Forest Drive, where this intersection has about 25 teenagers standing on one corner of the school bus. In August, there were two accidents at this intersection. One resulted in a car being T-boned and turned over. So it is a dangerous intersection, and it was 25 students standing on the far corner waiting for a school bus. Thornton Road, on the other hand, is a wide, direct connection to Capitol Boulevard. It is the fastest, most direct access to this new development by exiting Capitol Boulevard onto Thornton Road and receiving directly to the subdivision. That avoids zigzagging off of Thornton Road onto News Forest and navigating these narrow one-way streets that are narrowed to one way by cars parking on both sides, and it avoids a dangerous intersection. We believe this is a clearly warranted exception to the current city policy, and would provide a satisfactory solution to our objection to the zoning. We thus ask for the city to add a condition to the zoning application in keeping News Forest closed. A final comment. The developer had indicated his willingness to support this condition, but because of the city policy, when he went to put that in, he was told he could not. Well, thank the city council and the mayor for listening to this opposition, and appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you. We have other people signed up to speak. Shinoda Fahim?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I would like to confirm what Jean said about News Forest, that this is a very narrow street. I live very close to it, and I take that out to Wildwood Forest every day, and cars are parked on the sides. We have to wait for the oncoming traffic sometimes so we can go. So we would love for that street not to open. That would be great. And yeah, that's all I have to say. If we could have that, add that condition, that would be great. If not, then I am opposed to that rezoning.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Angie Edwards.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I also want to reiterate what Jean and Shinoda said about opening the News Forest Road. As Adam said, we did meet with them a couple of times, and they did try, as the council, excuse me, as the commission said, to respect all of our wishes, but our main wish was not to open News Forest Road. And they were, they gave us an option to open two ways into Thornton Road, but they said that that was not allowed for the city. We're not against, you know, development in that area. We're just really against doubling the zoning in that area. We are, as Adam also said, surrounded by R4, R6, and R10s, and I think R4 is just a better use for that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor Baldwin, and members of the city council. I am a resident and HOA president for the Park at Perry Creek neighborhood. We understand growth in Raleigh is inevitable and really benefits us all. Additionally, we know that affordable housing is an important component in growing cities. With all of that understood, we oppose the increase in zoning from R4 to R10. Even at a zoning rate of R7.5, the added traffic on already crowded neighborhood streets would become a major issue. Specifically, the connection to News Forest Road will increase traffic cutting through a neighborhood that was created to withstand R4 traffic, not R10. And the added traffic along Wildwood Forest Drive in front of the elementary school will further bottleneck an already unsafe traffic pattern. Children, buses, and cars all enter at one point and block traffic from both directions. Adding vehicles from the proposed 114- Adding vehicles from the proposed 114 new units traveling on our neighborhood streets will gridlock this community twice per day, 180 days every year. At this time, we have not been assured that the connection at News Forest Road has been removed from the plans specifically regarding the emergency services access. We have also requested changes to school patterns and assistance with traffic calming for current issues. Without those fixes in place, higher density will multiply the problems, especially with no plans for help from the developer or the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert McCaskey.
Yes, I am Doug McCaskey. I currently reside on the southwest corner. I bordered the proposed rezoning property. I am opposed, partially because of all the traffic, uh, issues that have been mentioned. The News Forest Road in particular is a straight shot from Wildwood Forest. It's already a dangerous street due to the parking, et cetera, that's been mentioned. Uh, there have been accidents there, but there's also a lot of children walking to and from Wildwood Forest, bus stops, et cetera. And I don't want to, uh, it already has been. But traffic coming from 540 and 440 is also going to traverse through the neighborhood heading south to north because of the right turn only on Wildwood Forest. They're gonna make that right and then turn, I'm sorry, on Perry Creek. They're gonna make that right to avoid the stoplight, uh, at Perry Creek and then traverse through the neighborhood to access this new area that's being developed. The, I have personal concerns also, and I'm trying to make this quick. Uh, I was at a couple of the meetings. I moved here 17 years ago, and I knew this property was going to be developed eventually. But I didn't expect, you know, sit in my own living room and have to look at a, uh, a townhome of those six residents, in essence. The buffer zones, I'm still not clear on the buffer zones, tree conservation areas, and, uh, landscape yard. During the meetings, I was told there would be a 20-foot buffer, and then there would be another 15 or 20-foot, another buffer or landscape yard or, uh, tree conservation area. I don't see that in the zoning conditions. The gravel road, I believe the gentleman, and I apologize, can't remember his name, I think he just mentioned it, I have a gravel road that's, uh, immediately behind my property that right now is being used as the main thoroughfare for residents living there. It's also a quad track. Uh, but that's a concern of mine, the noise, the dust, construction workers that using that for the main thoroughfare to go back for construction, that gravel road. The, uh, surveyors use it, they park right outside my backyard, basically. It's only, the road is only approximately, uh, 25 feet from the back of my house. I did go to two meetings with the developers. I appreciate them, uh, I'm not real familiar with the process, and I do appreciate them discussing these and trying to accommodate our needs, but today, he mentioned emails and so forth with the other neighborhood, and there's a 35-foot buffer there. I don't know why the buffer would be different for them versus the buffer for ones, uh, in my area. I didn't know we could, I don't want to use the word negotiate, but I didn't know we could discuss these things via email. The last I heard of meetings, uh, some of them were canceled due to COVID for obvious reasons, and I didn't know there was any further really discussion until this meeting was scheduled. There, there's so many other things I wanted to bring up, uh, but for sake of time, again, I didn't even know it would go this last. I just want to make it clear, I am opposed. I would love to be contacted, but I'm opposed for, uh, personal reasons and the general reasons of the neighborhood. I appreciate your time.
I'm sorry. Um, next we have Harry Goble. I am extending the time because we extended time for, um, the applicants. So, um, if Mr. Goble is, um, available?
I am.
Hi.
Hi, thank you all for, uh, letting us speak this evening. Um, I will make this as succinct as I can. So our primary concern that I have, uh, for the neighborhood in a whole part is the traffic and the traffic management, uh, upon opening the, opening of News Forest Road and Bramble Berry Way. Uh, connecting the two stubs will place more traffic in already congested neighborhood roads, uh, News Forest and News Wood as they connect to Wildwood Forest. Uh, Wildwood is the primary road between Perry Creek and Thornton Road, and it already has a heavy, a heavy traffic load, and the traffic will increase with the additional, uh, residential units, uh, being planned. Uh, and with the additional, also changes, proposed changes for Capitol and the closure of side road access such as Thornton, uh, more traffic will be placed onto Wildwood Forest. Um, just recently, there's been a total of six accidents on the main Wildwood Forest Road, um, within, uh, the last three weeks, uh, two on August 9th that I'm aware of, and four on August 22nd. Um, and that just shows the type of, you know, unexpected occurrences on a road that should be a neighborhood road, not a main thoroughfare for people to speed down. Uh, there's a total of 2,600, uh, units, uh, either single-family apartments or townhomes currently in the area, with an average of two vehicles per, and that's close to, or over 5,000 vehicles, not counting our daily traffic of semi trucks, dump trucks, other large vehicles, uh, going to the commercial buildings located on Watford Road, and also the dump facility located on Thornton Road. Um, concerns with traffic management, I know there's been studies in the past, uh, on Wildwood Forest, uh, as long as goes eight years plus, and even during that time, at the growth rate that was here eight years ago, um, they showed that we were number three on the list to receive speed bumps to try to control the traffic and, uh, help to traffic flow. Uh, there's been changes to the intersections, uh, of interest to Wildwood Forest School to try to control the traffic flow. Uh, those have not helped. There's been no parking signs put up on one side of the street on Wildwood Forest Road. That does not help the traffic flow. So, um, there should be additional traffic management, uh, review of the entire area before approval of the zoning is done because the additional load from the R10 residential units will, uh, increase the traffic and make it even more dangerous than what it already is. Thank you.
Kate, thank you. Did, um, I was trying to catch this. Did, um, the gentleman say there were speed bumps that were installed, or they were still waiting? Waiting, okay. All right. Are there any additional comments or questions? Yes, Council, um, Mayor Porten Branch?
Um, yes, I have a question because I'm hearing the concerns about the new development cutting through this community, but will this new development also have a connection to Thornton Road? I thought I saw that in the diagram. So with that connection to Thornton Road, and I know our policy requires to egress, egress, wouldn't residents that are having issues actually have another way out possibly because of this actually new subdivision? Or is this a one-way street? I'm just trying to understand.
There's potentially three points of access to this zoning case. Thornton Road, which there'd be a requirement that, that subdividing this property, that they would improve their section of Thornton Road. There's another street at the back, kind of in the, uh, the southeast corner of the property, that there is a street stub to, and then, and then News Forest, which was mentioned, and then a, an additional stub to the ownership of the subject property in the area that's not in the, um, in this rezoning case that might be a future, a future development, um, in that holdout area.
So the residents, so the residents would have the ability to actually use this stub out to get to Thornton and not have to go to the other wild street, correct?
Yes, sir. And the, the intent of that condition that, that, um, that the applicant mentioned was to try to make that the more obvious choice and the, the easier choice for a driver instead of potentially, you know, before there was a potential for a street design that would funnel more traffic in News Forest Road, and so we worked with the applicant to come up with something to be consistent with the comp plan, but would also discourage that connection to the extent feasible.
Counselor Cox?
Yes, uh, this is in my district, and, and I've been to the two CAC meetings. I've met with the neighbors, and the connectivity to News Forest Road really is the sticking point, um, in this rezoning case. So what I would like to do is give the applicant the opportunity to resubmit his condition to, uh, close the connect, connection to News Forest Road. If we can do that, and I believe we can move forward with this rezoning request.
I would like to hear from staff on that issue, um, because what the applicant said earlier is they were amenable to doing that, but staff said this doesn't go, um, well, it, it basically, um, says our policy, these are our policies, so we're slapping our policies in the face. So I just want to hear from staff on what the rationale is and a little more about, um, this road. Plus, um, the number of accidents is troubling to me. I mean, six accidents in a couple of weeks. I'd like some more data on that as well, and I don't know if staff has that available, but, um, if, I'm sorry, go on.
Yes, ma'am. The, I unfortunately do not have any data about, about recent crashes in that area. We, I could have my colleagues in traffic engineering pull that information and provide some, something to counsel. Um, specifically, what we told the applicant was that that condition of, of prohibiting a public street that would have otherwise been required by the UDO is inconsistent with a number of policies in the comp plan. Um, the result of those sorts of things tends to be higher cost to providing services like solid waste, uh, pickup, longer walking and driving times to the parks and the greenway and the school that are nearby for all of the residents, and, uh, potentially longer emergency response times. It would be inconsistent to add that condition, but it is not disallowed by the UDO, and that if council believes that that's the, uh, the appropriate way to move this case forward, then that is certainly possible. It wouldn't, it would still be inconsistent with the comp plan, but there's always, you know, some element that's a little bit of a gray zone.
Kate, thank you. Um, Counselor Cox, do you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'm having some trouble seeing that with your background. It's kind of going back in and out, so sorry about that.
That's okay. So, um, you know, we, we do make some exceptions, and, and I know council has made exceptions in the past about connectivity, and this really is a sticking point. Um, one of, one of the speakers talked about 5,000, uh, units in the area. Actually, if you look at this, um, the adjacent neighborhoods, there are nearly 650 units because the areas are all zone R6 and R10. Um, and I've been through the neighborhood. The neighborhood streets are narrow, narrower than what you would find, say, in an R4 district, and there are cars parked on both sides of the streets, and adding another, uh, 100, 115 plus units, uh, with some more than 200 additional automobiles, and have, having those automobiles going through the neighborhood does present a problem. And, um, and there will be access to Thornton Road, and, um, and I don't think it would have a negative impact on, um, issues like emergency response. If, if a fire truck or emergency vehicle were to approach this neighborhood, they would not go through the neighborhood, uh, street to get to it. They would go down Thornton Road to get to this neighborhood because it would take too long to negotiate through the neighborhood street to get to it. Um, for those reasons, and because, uh, I've heard, you know, the, the overwhelming chorus from the neighborhood, I would like to be able to give the applicant the opportunity to be able to submit a, resubmit the condition to, uh, close the cut connection to News Forest Road. That really is the key point with this rezoning request, and I think it's a, a great compromise, uh, in order to allow this, um, rezoning to go forward, and I would hope that everyone would support this.
Do we have any, um, okay, Mayor Porten, break.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to go along and support that, um, you know, to, to move this along. Um, the applicant's willing to do it, emergency vehicles, um, I know would use Thornton. They wouldn't come the other way. I think the connection would probably help the community more than hurt it, but this is what they're asking for, and this one, it, no, it sounds reasonable to me at this time.
Um, I would like to, well, I guess what you're asking, um, Counselor Cox, is if we hold this, um...
Well, I think in order to submit a condition, we would have to close the hearing.
Um, let's do this because I'm, I'm concerned about a few other things. If there's six accidents and no speed bumps and whatnot, that's a whole other issue we need to deal with as well.
Well, yes, and I agree, those things have to be dealt with, but those would be dealt with as part of a rezoning request.
That's correct.
Help, well, I'm uncomfortable voting on anything until I have some answers to those questions, and maybe what we can do, um, if you want to. I would be amenable to leaving this open, having them come back and submit that, but I want more information on the accidents and where we are in the speed bumps before I feel comfortable voting, period.
Well, I don't know what to say to that because, um, I mean, are, are you looking for a reason to leave the connection open?
No, I'm just looking for a reality check. So I'm not opposed to what you're saying, Counselor Cox. I just want some more information on these, um, accidents and speed bumps. That's all. That, that's very concerning to me. Um, Counselor Buffkin?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I agree, um, that, that was concerning to hear, and I'd like to get some more information on that as well, and, um, in the interest of transparency, I, uh, would tell Councilmember Cox, I respect your views on this and, and haven't heard from your constituents, but I do not believe that I would support, uh, removing this connection, um, because I think connectivity is important. Capitol Boulevard is a congested road as it is, and one of the reasons it's congested is we have developed a large part of our city with a, a lot of cul-de-sac neighborhoods with no connected streets. Um, and, and actually, to make it more, um, more important to me is the success of the future of Thornton Road Park, uh, even though that is off in the future quite a long ways. Um, uh, my experience has been that, uh, when you carefully plan around the park, it makes a better experience both for the neighborhood and for the park as an addition to our park system. So, uh, you know, in, in, with the direction that we're headed with this, uh, discussion of, uh, removing that connection, I wanted the council and, and, uh, Mr. Cox to be aware of that tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I see Bynum back at the podium. Do you have, are you, are, are you providing us with some additional information, or?
Well, I was just, I had checked with Jason Myers. He felt like we could bring that information back to you at the next meeting around the safety question. Uh, if you wanted to leave the hearing open, we could bring that back to you before you made a decision about closing, if that's helpful.
Um, Counselor Cox, would you be amenable to that?
Uh, actually, no. I, I, I mean, the accidents are there, and the neighbors and those accidents are the very reasons why the neighbors want to have the connection closed because they want to, they don't want to increase the traffic on their neighborhood road. And, um, and I don't think we're creating a situation with, uh, as Counselor Buffkin pointed out, with, uh, creating a cul-de-sac situation because there are other ways of connecting two neighborhood streets, uh, into the subdivision, uh, aside from News Forest. There's News Woods, and, um, and there, there are at least two other access points, uh, to the subdivision, uh, three access points, including Thornton Road. Um, so I don't think we're creating any kind of a cul-de-sac situation here, but I think what we would be doing by closing this connection is actually, uh, helping to protect the neighborhood from further automobile accidents and, and further dangerous situations by having too much traffic in the neighborhood. So personally, I would rather just close the hearing and allow the applicant to bring back this condition so that we can vote on this and move forward with this, um, rezon.
Um, Counselor Stewart?
Um, so I actually, um, lean towards what Councilmember Buffkin is saying in the... So I actually lean towards what Councilmember Bufkin is saying, in that we have a policy for a reason on connecting streets and making sure that we have connected neighborhoods and connected streets. At this point, it's getting late in the evening, and we still have multiple cases in front of us. I'm wondering if it makes sense to, to do two things. One, go ahead and close the hearing, as Councilmember Cox is suggesting, and at the same time, ask for additional information on these accidents. I think we have got to at least look into that regardless. And then we can vote on the matter next time. But I, I don't know that.
But I would like the applicant to be able to submit a condition to close this connection.
Understood. And I believe that's what I said. I may not have. I'm very tired.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Then, what I would like to do is make a motion to close the hearing and give the applicant the opportunity to bring back a condition to close this connection. And, and I just want to be sure with, with the city attorney about the timing if we close the hearing.
Okay. I would like to ask Bynum to speak to that. She is much better at, at keeping with those calendars than I am, and I would trust her.
So revised condition would, would need to be submitted by this coming Friday, so three days from now, to be considered at the September 15 meeting. But if you close the hearing, the applicant would have up to 30 days to modify their case to make it more restrictive. I would actually toss it back to the city attorney and ask if prohibiting a street connection would be considered more restrictive.
I think that it arguably is more restrictive.
So they would have 30 days in order to submit a condition?
Yes, sir. They could modify conditions for up to 30 days, provided they have not taken action.
I would like to ask the applicant if they would be able to doing that?
I think we need Beth to bring the applicant on for that.
Okay. Beth, could you bring the applicant back?
Applicant, Cameron Jones?
It looked like we were still muted. Are we muted? Are we unmuted now? Can you hear us?
You are unmuted. We can hear you.
All right. Fantastic, fantastic. This is Adam Ashbaugh. And like I said earlier, I'm sitting here with Cameron Jones in the same room. We, we are willing to defer to the pleasure of city council on how they want this condition drafted. The language of the condition, we're comfortable either way, whether it just be limited to a pedestrian only, or remain as a vehicular connection, the way city's transportation staff has implied. We're comfortable either way. So we really would rather defer to direction and guidance from your council on how you want us to present that condition. So we're looking, we're looking for your, your guidance on what should, what should we come back with in terms of a revised condition, if any?
So Counselor Milton, can I just hand raise? And then Counselor?
Yeah, I guess I have a questionable question. Maybe we need to mute the public. That's better. It sounds like several council members have indicated that they would not support a condition to close, not leave that street, the connection open. And so I'm just, I guess I'm confused that if the applicant comes back with including the condition to close the street, is that going to create problems when we vote? Because some council members don't want, like, how, basically, how do we have options when we go to vote, is one question I have. Second question I have is, has there been discussion with the, the community and the neighbors who have concerns about traffic, that if we are able to address the accidents and traffic quelling on that road, would that make it to where they're not opposed to the, the road being open? So I guess I have two questions. But I'm really more concerned that if they come back with a condition, there's going to be opposition to rezoning because of the condition. And do we have flexibility on that, once it reaches the table for vote?
Well, that would be one way to cool off the proposal. But Counselor Cox?
In meeting with the residents of the area, first of all, they would not be opposed to the rezoning if the connection were closed. And secondly, if they were mitigating, if there were ways to mitigate accidents and the traffic, they would still be opposed to it because of the increase in the amount of traffic through the neighborhood. It would just be a lot more cars, a lot more vehicles. So, so to provide guidance back to the developer, I would say either condition, either offer a condition to close the street totally, or offer a condition that provides only bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. I'm fine with either way. And I heard from the neighbors that they would be fine with bicycle and pedestrian connectivity as well. So that's another way for connectivity, not necessarily vehicular connectivity, but it would provide connectivity for pedestrians and bicycles.
Okay. To move this along, can I ask Counselor Cox, would you be amenable to, we close the hearing, I guess the applicant then will have 30 days to file the condition. In the meantime, I would like to ask staff to provide us with information about these accidents that were cited, the status of the speed bumps, and also how, like, I, I'd like to know the difference between the impacts if we did a pedestrian pathway versus, say, roads. So I just want a better understanding of that.
That's fine.
Would that be amenable to everybody? Counselor, work with me here. Counselor Knight?
I'm trying. Just following up on Counselor Milton's concerns that if we close it, and they come back with more restrictive conditions, but that a majority of us may actually oppose the actual condition, but not, but support the rezoning. But, and I think that's what Counselor Milton was asking, because it sounds like we may be going against the city policy. And the question is, do we support that policy, or do we want that policy changed? And if we do this, is it prohibit us from dealing with that, with, with that situation, because we'll have to, we'll have to either oppose or support it based on the condition?
Okay. City Attorney?
If they come back and offer a condition, you don't have to vote to include the condition. You, you just can't have conditions that are less restrictive. So it's really not, the, the case isn't, isn't approved until you vote on it. So you could vote with conditions one through five and not six, or whatever is proposed.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Cox, if you would like to make a motion to close the hearing, but also include the items that I've asked for as follow-up information, can you?
I will, I will make a motion to close the hearing, to allow the developer the opportunity to submit a condition to close the connection to vehicular traffic, and with the, potentially allowing pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And, and then also ask staff to come back with an analysis of about, of the accidents that have occurred recently in the area, as well as historically what the, what the accidents are like in the area.
And also, status of speed bumps.
And status of speed bumps in the area.
Okay. Do I have a second? Counselor Fort? Okay, all in favor? Clerk, that was unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, we have rezoning Z eight twenty, five ten Carolina Avenue. We have, let's see, we have three people in support, one who has signed up to speak, who is opposed. Can we hear from Bynum?
This is a request to rezone from R six with a special residential parking overlay district. That overlay would remain in place, and the base district would change to residential ten. This is just under an acre on Carolina Avenue. And you can see that on the west side of Carolina Avenue, the adjoining parcels are R six. And to the rear of this parcel, you have RX three zoning. On the north side of Western Boulevard here, you have some R ten zoning and also some industrial mixed-use zoning. The request is consistent with the future land use map and with the comprehensive plan, and the planning commission recommends approval. So here's an aerial view of the site. You can see the multifamily to the west of the site in question, and single family, and some multifamily in the Carolina Avenue, Grove Avenue area. Couple of views of the site. There is a substantial stand of trees and low-lying area at the front of the site, at the east side of the site. So a couple of views there. Conditions here, they have prohibited the apartment building type. They have specified a protective yard installed along the southern property line. They have prohibited vinyl as an exterior material. And they have made some specifications about the disturbance of the vegetative buffer on the east side, the front of the site along Carolina Avenue. So the change here is an increase in residential units. The setbacks are not changing, but there would be the possibility of some additional units here in either single family or attached or townhouse building type. The request is consistent with the moderate density residential designation on the future land use map. The urban form map is not applicable here, as we're going to a residential district, remaining in a residential district. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan overall. Handful of consistent policies. Inconsistent policy was identified related to conservation of single-family neighborhood. The planning commission recommends approval. What questions could I answer for you before you open the public hearing?
Am I muted?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I keep putting myself in unmuting. Who had a question? All right, Counselor Fort?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the questions I had was, was there any evaluation done as relates to stormwater in the area? They've had a, a number of new development sites in that community, and the, the, the neighbors in the area have raised a number of issues as relates to stormwater. So has there been any evaluation of that?
That's been a point of conversation throughout the life of the case. And Wayne Miles is here from Stormwater Staff, can answer your question, speak to that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne Miles, Stormwater Program Manager. There are two instances of structural flooding in that vicinity. We're aware of them, that we are aware of. One is across the street, and so upstream of the proposed site that's proposed for rezoning, and so would not be impacted. The other one is downstream of the proposed rezoning site, but it's far enough downstream that it would not trigger any automatic additional stormwater controls under the U D O requirements. So this proposed site is only about 0.4% of the total drainage area to that downstream site of structural flooding.
Okay. We're still on mute, yeah.
Counselor Fort?
I had a different question as well. There have also been some concerns raised by the, the neighbors as it relates to traffic flow in that community, based on several new development projects that have been completed in, in the area. I'm not sure who I'm talking to. I may need to wait. Okay. Yes, sir. So has there been any analysis done on the, the, the traffic issues in the area?
My name's Jason Myers. I'm with the Transportation Department. There isn't a specific answer to that question, I don't think, other than the, the massive bus rapid transit project that, that's being planned right now, or is in the corridor planning phases of that. This is a relatively small site, and therefore, it's, it's on its own, its trip generation and the amount of traffic that it's expected to generate is pretty limited. That doesn't mean that that isn't an incremental impact, and, and of course, a thousand straws weigh something. But in this case, the, the protected trip gener, projected trip generation is, is six cars in the morning peak and eight cars in the A M. peak, which is only two and three more than the current zoning entitlement might lead to. So, so that corridor plan is going to be looking at a lot of different things relative to the street network and relative to, to how transportation works in that area. And, and of course, the addition of, if even better transit will, will help some of those things as well. But I don't think that there's a specific answer to that in terms of traffic flow today.
Okay. We can go on with the hearing, but I, I've got some, maybe some follow-up for the applicant.
Okay. Well, I will open the hearing. We'll start with those who have signed up in support. I have Kenneth Haywood, Ron Garber, and George Finch.
Mayor, I believe we're going to start with Kenneth Haywood.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and city council members, I know it is very late. You've had a very long day. I very much appreciate your staying with us into the night. I will try to make this as straightforward as I can. My name is Kenneth Haywood. I'm with the law firm of Howard Stallings Frome at five four one zero Trinity Road. On behalf of the property owner of five ten Carolina Avenue, if we could pull up the presentation, and while that's being pulled up, I'm going to continue so that we don't unnecessarily occupy your time. I do have with me on the phone ability to talk, George Finch with G Foni Associates, and the property owner that's necessary. And while we're waiting for the presentation, the PowerPoint to pull up. I will tell you that I think what is exciting about this particular project is that it is what the city has sought in terms of having higher density around the bus, bus rapid transit system that you just heard about a moment ago. It does provide additional housing options in an area within the future land use and comp plan visioning, moderate density residential. If we could go to the next slide, and I'll walk through the slide with you, acclimate you to the site. So this aerial is able to show you that this is a mixed-use area. You have five ten Carolina Avenue, which is highlighted. And right behind us, literally behind the property, is the Hunter's Glen Apartments, which is a multi-unit, rather large apartment complex. And then to the west of that is the Plaza West Shopping Center with the anchor tenant of Harris Cedar. So you, you have right here, Western Boulevard and then Franklin Road, a lot of different uses in terms of both shopping center as well as the multifamily. Next slide, please. This is an overview of the actual site. I have this on the screen for a couple of reasons. One, to show you how close the site is to Western Boulevard in terms of the bus rapid transit system, we're only 300 feet away. And so when we talk about traffic, any traffic from this site is going to be this close to Western Boulevard. There's not a lengthy distance of needing to drive up and down Carolina Avenue to access Western Boulevard, which right now is a full movement intersection. You will all see on this site that there is a heavy vegetative growth, both to what you see to the north and the east, and also to the west. So this site is really protected in terms of the amount of vegetation. You will see the southern site, it does not have as much vegetation and tree growth. And that is why we are including the condition that we have regarding a protective yard. Next slide, please. This again shows you that the future land use map for this is moderate density residential, but bordering the medium density residential to the west. Next slide, please. existence for many, many years are several different existing townhome projects. You have 520 Carolina, which is two doors down from the subject site, which is a four unit townhome complex. Below that, you have Caroline Heights, in which you see multiple units on that property. You have the Grove Park Townhomes, which are many, many units on Carolina Avenue and Scarlet Maple Drive. And then you also have, in addition, the Carolina Avenue Townhomes, which is across the street. So we have existing townhome projects that have been on the site for many years and this area really is one in which it is consisting, in its history, several townhome projects. And the next slide, please. This is just an example to show you what the Grove Park Townhomes look like and the number of rooftops in terms of the amount of townhomes. So by no means is our project going to be the first introduction of townhomes because that has existed for some time in this particular community and that's what this example is. You will also see on this one, the fact that these driveways are all directly off of the road, whereas in our site, you will, you saw on the first slide, that we have a long driveway and so the parking will be off of that one driveway. We will not have this situation where you would have multiple driveways off of one street. The final slide is simply just to show you that the site, as you've heard, is consistent with your future land use map and your comprehensive plan and has a number of different policy considerations of which is consistent. Let me, so that is the end of the presentation. With my remaining time, let me address one of Councilor Ford's questions regarding stormwater because it was brought up during the planning commission meeting. There, as Wayne Miles has said, this particular site is only 0.4% of the entire area in terms of drainage for the site. So it's a very small site in terms of the actual drainage. The key thing here is the fact that of this 0.89 acres, 0.55 acres of that is going to be left undisturbed. And so the majority of the site will be left undisturbed after development and that's key in terms of the fact that we're going to have a very low impervious count on here. In fact, under R10, you could develop a much higher percentage, but based on the calculations that have been performed, we see a very minimal increase in the impervious count from pre to post. I will let you know that while there have been some concerns and discussions about stormwater on this particular site, I personally went to the site after the hurricane on August the 4th that passed over our area, as well as last night when we had six inches. And I will tell you that there's a creek that runs between our site and Carolina Avenue and it does an incredible job of draining on a very quick basis because both times I went out after these rain events, the water was already down back to the base of the creek. There was no flooding issues and as Wayne said, in terms of across the street, they are upstream from this property because of the topography. So we do have a situation in which water that is flowing through the property is moving so that it gets back to its normal rate of flow in a very quick basis. So we do not believe that this particular site would have any negative impact on any type of stormwater issues in the area if they in fact exist because it is such a small site in terms of the amount of development and within the total drainage area for this. And so I'm happy to answer any of Councilor Ford's questions or others regarding that particular aspect, but we would ask that your support for this rezoning. We basically would go from an as right right now to be able to build five units, to be able to build three additional units to eight. And so the net increase would go from five units to eight, but it would allow us to be able to have townhomes, which right now, until the tax change and center consideration is approved, we would not have the ability to do under R6. All the other townhomes that you saw were before the changes to the current UDO.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask if we can have, let's see, Diane Bell is opposed to this, ask if we can hear from Ms. Bell.
Hi there. Thank you for your time this evening. My students are going to love this because our unit this month is government. So when, at 7:00 AM tomorrow morning, when they see their teacher exhausted, I'll explain why and they'll know what, how government runs. So anyway, and I'm a special educator, but they're, they're very knowledgeable students. They'll, they'll totally get the irony of this. So first of all, I want to say that as of last night when we had that torrential rain and this morning, it did not go down to its original, the water level did not go down to its original. It was still high. And I saw the water line and it was extremely high and that was for one night's events. So I want to discount that. I've been living here for 28 years, 29 years, and so I know exactly what that used to look like and what it looks like now from all of the development that we have had. That, that stream takes in everything from Heather and Grove and all of the development that has come in there. There have been townhomes there that have been torn down. There have been apartment type dwellings that have been torn down for single family homes that are going for a half a million dollars. You want to talk about affordable housing being taken away. We got Section 8 housing that's going to wind up being gentrified and taken away. When you start doing this, R10 and allowing all of this to be destroyed, you have a lovely neighborhood that's going to be destroyed. But getting back to the stormwater, all of that stormwater from Heather and Grove comes through my backyard and the city council has denied R10 in the property behind me because of that fact. There was a stormwater study and Wayne Miles was a part of that. So he knows what the flow is like for that. I've spent many times providing video of the water, the white caps that come out, the end of the drainage into the Simmons Creek. The riparian buffer that at the next door was destroyed and that we have to be really careful that that riparian buffer is not destroyed. And because of the stream in the riparian buffer, that's why there isn't that much land for this property for, to be building. Eight units, five and under R6 is plenty. Eight is ridiculous, especially when you have to have parking for eight units. There, that, I think when he said to the planning commission, that came out to like a third of an acre, maybe a quarter to a third of an acre that he can actually put anything on. And I just don't know how you can do that. And not only that, but if you think that this is going to be affordable housing and if you think that the people who are going to be in these rental apartments are going to use the bus, you're mistaken. What's happening is it's getting filled with college students and multiple cars and multiple cars for parties. We have already a problem with these college students that are renting the home that's there as it is. So that's an issue. So we, and we have other pieces of parcels that are going to be coming up for R10 and they also, it's going to be the same problem. We're going to have more stormwater issues. We're going to have more traffic issues, multiple cars. This, this is the only outlet that can make a left-hand turn onto Western Boulevard other than Powell. Everything streams through it and it's, and it's just going to get worse. We don't have any sidewalks here. We are in the street. We have people that are parking on both sides of the street, cars flying down this street. I don't have any problem with the Scarlet Maple down the, down the street because they've done it under R6. They're not R10. They used the property they had to, to, and worked with, I guess, planning or city council at the time and did it under R6. I don't see why, because somebody just asks for something, you're going to go ahead and give it to them. I mean, you know, I, I won't even go into that. The other issue is you're displacing people, you're displacing affordable housing, Section 8 housing. You're displacing people with special needs. You're displacing handicapped people, disabled people that already use the bus transportation that is here. Okay? If you approve R10, you're just opening up for, for other, other property owners to sell their property to the highest bidder to make their big money and destroy it. This has already happened on Heather. It's already, it's already happened on Grove. We have half million dollar houses that have replaced affordable housing. People who have children with special needs that were in those housing. People with, that were disabled that walked to the grocery store and back, that there are, that are going to get displaced. This is already happening. This is bad news for our neighborhood where these people do not even have the wherewithal to, they don't have a computer. They can't go online and, you know, and have internet connection and everything to, to be able to go to city council and say, I can't do this. You know, this is taking away my property, you know, my ability to afford my housing. I'm just really so saddened by this. So we've got stormwater issues, we've got traffic issues, we've got affordable housing issues. This R10 is not a good fit for this community and we need a traffic study. We need a stormwater study. We need more information before this can be approved. And I suggest that you do not approve this. A lot can be done on, under R6. There is no need to make it R10 and make it untenable for the neighborhood and the stormwater and the traffic and it is not going to be our, these, whoever goes in these are not going to be taking advantage of BRT. They're going to be college students, like already have been taking over these because they can afford to put a bunch of kids in an apartment building and split the cost of it. It's not going to go to people who already live on my street. I already, I have students that live on my street that love that they can see one of their teachers living on the same street that they do.
Ms. Bell, your time is up. Thank you very much. Okay, we have heard from everybody. I am going to close the hearing. Council Branch?
Yes, I have a question, it's probably for the applicant or maybe Ms. Bell. Who currently lives in the property that's there now?
Is the applicant still on the line?
Yes, I am. Can I tell you what? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. To answer your question, may I pro term? Ronald Garber, who has lived in this town for over 43 years, acquired this property about a year ago. It has been a single family house since it was built many, many years ago. And so he bought it and at this point in time, it is rental property. He's not made any decisions yet in terms of who will be living on the property should this rezoning go through and the townhouses are built. It will be brand new, 2021 construction in terms of the townhouses and we will see what the market is for that product in this particular area.
Okay, so these are going to be townhomes and currently it's rental property?
Currently is one house and so you'd be moving from one house, which obviously you could have any number of people into townhomes, which are supposed to be two-bedroom townhomes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is Mr. Miles still here?
I only, oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
From staff.
Yes, sorry. I didn't raise my hand, I apologize. So you heard Ms. Bell's presentation that you previously denied a R10 request based on stormwater issues. Could you tell us a little bit, briefly tell us a little bit about that, if you recall?
Yes, that was a case, I believe it was last year on Grove Avenue, which is behind Ms. Bell's property. And I did visit her site, her home, and there's a good bit of flow that comes from that property behind her house, through her house. And we talked to her about a drainage assistance program, but she did not want to donate an easement that would be required, so that did not move forward. But that is, as I had mentioned before, her house is upstream of the proposed rezoning property and so would not be directly impacted by any stormwater from this property that's being proposed rezoning.
And one more quick question, but you did say, did you, did I hear you right earlier that there is a property downstream that could be negatively impacted?
Yes, ma'am. There is a, there is a property downstream that has had some structural flooding reports, but it is, it is a considerable ways downstream from this property. The way our UDO is written, a rezoning property would have to be 5% or more of the drainage area to the structural flooding and in order to qualify for more stringent stormwater controls. This property is only 0.4% of that drainage area, so it's relatively small compared to the rest of the drainage area to that property. You know, stormwater controls in that situation would be up to, up to council.
Thank you.
Be driven by the UDO itself.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, the hearing is closed. Councilor Ford?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. I definitely understand all of the, the concerns of Mrs. Bell and the, the other neighbors as it relates to stormwater. And I guess in a way, I want to make a general comment. It seems like there's some, you know, ongoing stormwater issues that need to be evaluated in, in the area. And certainly as more projects, I think, are slated to come down the pipeline for this particular community, certainly we would want to take a look at, you know, how the stormwater is being managed, I guess, you know, somewhat collectively in that perspective, perspective area. And quite frankly, you know, I wouldn't mind having the staff take another comprehensive look because I know there's some more cases that are coming down that are proposed for the area. So that, as well as, I've been out on the site, the street is very, very narrow and it's like a feeder street into some of the other areas, other development back in the back of the area in the community. And in some conversations with staff, would like to evaluate, you know, some of the parking concerns that have been raised as well with, with the constituents. So I'm not necessarily 100% comfortable moving forward tonight and would like to hold it open and have some conversations with staff about doing some analysis.
Okay, I already closed the hearing. So, but that would allow us, city attorney, that would allow for some additional conditions to be brought forward?
And here's Barnum to give you the timetable.
Right, so for conditions to be considered at your next
Right, so for conditions to be considered at your next meeting, those would need to be received by Friday of this week. But remember that they would have up to thirty days to modify the case. So it could take longer if you wanted to allow time for them to work with the neighbors or have conversations with you all.
If I'm hearing Counselor Ford though, what she's also saying is there's some bigger concerns about stormwater in this area in general. This is on a bus rapid transit line. And one of the things we have talked about is we need more density on BRT lines. So going with that goal seems to be important. From a single-family home to eight homes, we also spent a lot of time talking today about supply and demand, the need for more housing. This could house eight groups instead of one family. Um, so I, I think that it's important to consider all these things, but we might have to look at this more holistically, separate from this case, just in terms of what the future brings. So, um, so let it, we will hold this um for two weeks and see um Counselor um Ford, if you get, can get some answers to your questions. And we'll take this up in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Okay, to clarify, are you closed, you're gonna close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, um, if it's been closed, I think that you're fine.
Okay. All right, and staff understands what the expectations are. Okay, thank you. All right, next we have TC seven twenty, mezzanines. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, Crabtree Village, then mezzanines. Okay, TC Z one twenty Crabtree Village, this is a text change zoning conditions.
Good evening, Mark Holland, Planning and Development. Uh, it's a TC one dash twenty. There we go. Okay, this is amendment to the conditions associated with master plan MP one dash twelve and rezoning Z dash nineteen dash twelve for the uh Crabtree Village Development. The The property is located um south of the Crabtree Valley Mall and it is bordered uh by uh Crabtree Valley Avenue, Blue Ridge Road, and Homewood Banks Drive. Uh, this uh particular text change is dealing specifically with lots two and three of the Crabtree Village Development. This is a rendering of phase two of Crabtree Village. It's a multifamily development with a parking deck that is located along uh Homewood Banks Drive. This was a rendering that was provided by the applicant. In their petition, they're requesting revisions to the, uh, to, to allow the following modifications. This would be uh for the construction of phase two of development as a single building comprising all or a portion of lot two and three and revise the additional relative language accordingly. It would be to allow uh building seven and buildings eight through ten to be uh designed as and constructed as one building or as uh up to as many as uh four distinct buildings. It would remove the limitation of thirty-nine thousand square feet of floor area for a single retail user or a single retail tenant. And it would remove the minimum area of fifteen thousand square feet for that uh, for that user or tenant space. An increase in the number of allowed hotel rooms would uh, would be from two hundred and thirty to two hundred and thirty from the current uh two hundred rooms. That is, if they were to build it as such. For uh parking decks, uh, they would, uh, they're proposing a minimum requirement, uh, minimum required setback of twenty feet from Homewood Banks Drive to the west and fifty feet from all other public rights of way. The current condition states that they must be fifty feet from all public rights of way. They would also revise the um, the width of the private streets and driveways to twenty-three feet, where the current minimum is uh twenty-five feet. The uh, the parking requirements would also be uh modified to uh reflect the proposed uses on the project. Uh, it would also allow a maximum height of sixty-five feet for the parking deck uh, or any parking deck that's located on lots two and three. Uh, the uh, the current standard, or current condition rather, is for a maximum height of three stories. See, it would uh give consideration to the slopes and topography of the site. As if you're familiar with this site, there, that is a challenge for this property. And uh, all buildings directly adjacent to and within fifty feet of the public right of way. Uh, they, uh, they would have consideration of that topography for the placement of any uh entrances, prominent entrances to the uh, the property. It would apply the uh required building materials uh only be on those facades that can be viewed from the public right of way. The current standard states that fifty percent of the identified materials uh should be used on conditioned uh buildings exclusive of any finstration. The applicant has stated, you know, in their submittal that the uh Crabtree Village master plan should be amended as it applies to lots two and three because the flexibility that, that it would give to uh, that is built into the master plan was superseded by the UDO limitations on administrative adjustments. And as a result of this, those changes that could have been made at the staff level now require rezoning. The, the uh master plan included a level of speci- uh specificity and detail understanding that certain elements, uh, adjustments could be made administratively. But now with the UDO, uh, those are, uh, prevents those changes without a rezoning. Additionally, the master plan includes a number of standards and references that no longer applicable or have been affected by the new UDO and changes to the surrounding area since the adoption of the original master plan. It's my understanding that the applicant is uh on this call and I am free to answer uh any questions.
Do we have any questions? No questions? Okay, I'm going to, oh. Oh, do, yeah, open the hearing? Yes. I'm tired.
Right, good evening, Madam Mayor, it's, it's Michael Birch. Um, I'm on this one and I think I've managed to get my, my three-year-old to bed, so hopefully uh she, you won't hear from her again.
No, actually, that was a highlight of the evening. Thanks for making us all feel good and again, um, providing a good laugh. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm, I'm definitely good for a good laugh. So first I want to acknowledge that uh Ryan Solo, uh, with Silver Hills, uh, property owner is on here with me. Um, and I want to give a little brief background and then touch on some of the items that, that Mark um touched on, so.
With it being the operative word, right, Michael?
Yeah, a- a- absolutely, Mayor. Um, and, and just to that point, I just, I will go straight to clarifying a couple of things. One, with regard to the parking deck uh setback, um, w- we are not changing that. Uh, and I, I think all of these revisions are intended to clarify gray areas. Um, the current master plans allows the deck to be set back twenty feet from Homewood Banks um Drive. It also allows it to be sixty-five feet above grade. And we're just making that clear, uh, but we're not intending to change that. Um, and then also with regard to the architecture, I think the intent was to have that standard apply on the outside of buildings. But as you saw, w- w- our proposed building has an interior courtyard that's not viewed from the outside. And so it didn't make sense to, and there was a question from staff about, does it apply there? So um, instead of dealing with all these things as uh interpretation issues at the staff level or going to the Board of Adjustment, we thought it best just to uh bring all these forward and make these clarifications. But um, it is our intent to do what we always thought we could do um under the current master plan. But to make the staff review go smoother, we uh went through this process. So um, happy to address any specific questions that the council may have and can go into greater detail if, if needed. But want to be respectful of, of your time and, and what you have left this evening.
Thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions? Oh, okay, well, yep, move your hand over, David. Thank you. Counselor Knight?
Um, making sure everybody's still awake. Um, just quick, quick statement, and I, and I think um, uh, Michael and the developer have taken care of this. I'm just looking at um UD three uh dash eleven parking structures and then Crabtree parking structures. I have found that along Crabtree, there, there are multiple places where the, the parking decks back up to Crabtree. So i- i- instead of facing Crabtree, uh, but when they do, the aesthetic value is definitely lowered. Um, and that could point out multiple places along Crabtree. So I think that's something that we need to work on uh to, when they are backing up to Crabtree and facing away. Um, I'm sorry, not Crabtree, Glenwood Avenue, sorry, Glenwood Avenue. Um, that, and, and I think this is an issue citywide with these parking decks sitting there backed up to these, to these major thoroughfares, um, and it's still uh not aesthetically pleasing at all. And if we can make some, do some work on that. And it, and I think these, and that's not specific to this case because I think they're actually working, they're dealing with that. But I think in general, we, that's something we need to make sure we deal with. Thank you, and I'll make a motion uh when appropriate, um, Mayor.
Okay, uh, there's no one else to sign up. There's no opposition, so I will close the hearing. I'm sure um Michael won't be upset with that. Um, Counselor Knight, your motion?
Thank you, I, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated September one, twenty twenty, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the text change to the conditional use zoning with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action.
Do I have a second? Counselor Ford, thank you. Um, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, clerk, that was approved unanimously. The next item is mezzanines.
Uh, Mark Holland again with Planning and Development. Uh, this is text change uh seven dash twenty for um a revision to our mezzanines. This text change is the result of a citizen's petition. Uh, the, this request would allow for buildings taller than five stories to contain mezzanines on a maximum of two stories. Uh, spaces would otherwise qualify as a mezzanine would be counted as an additional story. Uh, this would impose no limit on the number of mezzanines for buildings that are five stories or fewer. It would allow for a mezzanine uh to occupy up to fifty percent of the floor area of the room or space in which they are located. It, it would also clarify that multiple mezzanine spaces can exist within the same story of a building. Uh, for example, an apartment building could contain multiple side-by-side loft uh units all occupying the same story. Just as a, a brief background, the current definition added in two thousand and eighteen was part of TC seventeen sixteen for the attics and basements. It originated out of concern that multiple mezzanines contributed to overall intensity. The uh, the definition roughly mirrors the building code. However, mezzanines were uh limited to only the first floor of a building and only at a percentage of uh thirty-three percent of the uh building footprint. The uh proposed text change would modify the definition. As you can see here, that uh a considerable amount of it is being struck from the current ordinance. And this deals mainly with things that will be made into, uh, broken out into conditions uh or standards rather. Uh, the definition would uh, would read that uh mezzanine is an intermediate level or levels between the finished floor and the ceiling uh of a story. Uh, there would also be uh height requirements uh placed on this. Uh, when a mezzanine is comprised of uh less than fifty percent of the floor area of the room or space in which it is located, uh, it would, uh, it is not considered a story. But when it comprises fifty percent or more of the floor area, it would be considered a full story. If a building is taller than five stories, uh, mezzanines are permitted only, uh, within only two stories of that building and any additional intermediate level otherwise qualifying as a mezzanine is considered an additional story. Uh, for any building that is five or fewer stories, there would be no limit on the number of stories that a building may contain a mezzanine, though it would be limited to five. The uh, the impacts that can be associated with this would be greater flexibility in design of uh buildings and mezzanines. There would be an increase in the maximum floor area of the mezzanine from the current thirty-three percent to fifty percent. And we would eliminate the word uh open from the definition, which could lead uh to reliance upon the building code definition and the um openness uh criteria. Uh, as you can see here, we consider some alternate language. And uh, what that did was uh add that word open. But as I just noted, we took that out just so we could um rely pretty much on the um, what the building code states. Uh, the same can be said with the uh, the thirty-three percent of the floor area, which is the current standard. We have um, uh, we've uh bumped that up to fifty percent, so it is uh consistent with what you find in the building code. The uh Planning Commission recommended approval of this application or this uh, this um text change uh by unanimous vote. And uh, staff is available for any questions that you may have on this.
Thank you. Um, do we have any questions?
Yes.
Staff?
Yes, please.
Counselor Cox?
Uh, regarding uh not counting a mezzanine as a story, how does this affect the overall height of a building? Are there any limits?
Well, you know, the standards for measuring the height of a building did change recently where it was um, where we measure it in the number of stories. So uh, they would still be bound by the number of stories and they could have that extra space at the, say, at the top of a building. If they wanted to have that mezzanine floor, they would be allowed to have that as long as it did not exceed the fifty percent. And again, if it goes beyond that fifty percent, it would uh, it would count as a, a full story, which means they would still be limited by the number of overall stories. The number of overall stories will not change. It's just how we interpret what is a story.
And you could have multiple mezzanines on multiple floors?
Uh, it would be limited to two within buildings that are more than five stories in height.
Limited to two, okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, there is no one signed up to speak on this issue. I'm going to open the hearing and close the hearing. I'm going to make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Counselor Melton, second?
Yes, but there's also, there's a consistency.
Consistency statement.
I'm happy to read it if you want me to make the motion and then you.
Sure.
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated September first, twenty twenty, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the warning text amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action.
That's what I said, right?
Question.
Um, so we have a motion and do we have a second?
I have a question, actually.
Hold on, please let us finish.
Okay.
We have a second. Counselor Cox, what is your question?
Okay, so just to go back to the limit, there's a limit of two mezzanines if you're. greater than five stories. How many mezzanines can you have if you're less than five stories?
You could, you could have, there's no limit on the number. You wouldn't be bound by that number of two, but you still could not exceed the five stories in height.
And there's no, is there a foot limit in terms of maximum number of feet for the building?
For five, for less than five stories, I think that height limit is 65.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, Clerk, that passes unanimously. We are going to take a two-minute break before we go into the evidentiary hearing. Please mute and please turn off your cameras. Be back in two minutes. Okay, thank you. We are back for our evidentiary hearing. This is related to subdivision 0054, 2019, at 532 East Jones Street in Oakwood Historic District. City Attorney, you are going to take this over.
Yes, Mayor, I am going to take this over. And I think I'm as tired as everybody, so we'll get through it the best we can. Now, the first thing I want to do is just open with a few remarks, so people know what to expect. This is a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing on a request for a subdivision approval in the Oakwood Historic Overlay District. Under the UDO, these requests are heard by City Council, acting basically as a quasi judicial body. There has been a recommendation by the Raleigh Historic Development Commission to approve the subdivision, but your decision should still be made based on the evidence presented to you tonight. A quasi judicial hearing is a little bit different than your typical legislative hearing or rezoning like we've been doing. There are some different procedures. Witnesses are sworn, and we have an obligation to make sure the parties' due process rights are protected. There are also some additional rules for some of you who have done these before because of the recent state statutes on remote hearings, so there's a little few twists here and there, but we're going to get through it. Basically, the witnesses must be sworn. Generally, we do that all at the beginning of the meeting, but because of the remote platform, all of the individuals who have signed up to speak have already signed a written oath form that Gail will reaffirm when they get ready to speak. So we'll swear them in as they speak instead of as a group. Staff will, Alicia Bailey Taylor, she'll make her presentation. Council can ask questions after that. The applicant, who's represented by Chad Essex, will present his case. The exhibits are already loaded in board docs. This is a little bit of another remote twist. You have everything in front of you. The opponents will then be given the opportunity to speak, and then we'll give it back to the applicant to make a closing statement or any rebuttal, and we will close the hearing and let council deliberate. One other thing you may remember, there are written findings of fact and conclusions of law that are required. They will be drafted before your next meeting and presented for approval at the September 15 meeting. Lastly, I would just remind the witnesses, applicants, and others that the standards that the applicant is required to meet are the subdivision standards in the UDO. They are in your staff report and will be discussed, I'm sure, by the applicant, and these are the only standards that should be considered. So as witnesses are going forward, maybe they should, I'd like to remind them to try to keep their testimony to those relevant topics. So with that, let's move on to the hearing, and the first person to testify is Alisa Bailey, Alicia Bailey Taylor. And there she is on the screen, and I would ask the Clerk to reaffirm her oath, please.
Yes, Alicia, can you state your full name, please?
Alicia Bailey Taylor.
You have signed an oath form prior to this hearing, but, but can you please swear or firm again for the record that the testimony you will give tonight will be truthful?
I do.
Okay. Then, Alicia, it's time for you to go ahead and make your presentation.
All right. Let's see. There you go. All right. Good evening again. I'm Alicia Bailey Taylor with the Planning and Development Department, and we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. This is a proposal to subdivide a 0.29 acre, approximately 12,600 square foot parcel of land located at 542 East Jones Street in the north central part of the city into two lots. The property is zoned residential 10 with a general Oakwood Historic Overlay District. On the next slide, this proposal is subject to the Unified Development Organiz, Regulations listed on the slide, and it was reviewed by city staff for compliance with the applicable objective standards of the UDO that are shown on this slide. On the next slide, I just want to reiterate what our city attorney has already stated. The UDO specifies the approval process for this subdivision, which includes review and recommendation by the Raleigh Historic District, Historic District Commission, excuse me, and a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing with the City Council. With the next slide, you'll see that the Historic District Commission reviewed the proposed subdivision on June 16th and voted four, I mean, excuse me, eight to four to recommend approval. And finally, on the next slide, which is an example of what the subdivision is, Chad Essex with Pointers, Pointers Bureau, excuse me, will be representing the applicant in the case, and staff is available if you have any questions.
If no one has any questions, I don't see any hands up. If we could call Chad Essex, he will not need to be sworn because he is the lawyer, but I think he's going to make a statement and call his witnesses.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Would you like those witnesses to be sworn now, or would you just wait until I finish my introductory remarks?
Why don't you wait because you don't know if you're calling them all, right?
Correct.
Okay, let's just go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Baldwin and members of City Council. Chad Essex with Pointers Sproul, 301 Fable Street, Suite 1900. Here this evening on behalf of the property owner, Karen Still, requesting the City Council provide final approval of this proposed preliminary subdivision. Joining me here virtually tonight is the property owner, Karen Still, as well as the engineer on the project, Josh Crumpler. In the board docs, you, as Ms. Tatum noted, you should have a packet of exhibits identified as Exhibits one through six. Much of what is in those exhibits are within the staff memo and other documents that were, that were provided by staff. I will note that in Exhibit one and two are affidavits that we prepared, an affidavit of Tanya Tully, as well as an affidavit of Alicia Bailey Taylor. The substance of those affidavits is to review in detail the applicability of the UDO provisions and the compliance of the subdivision request with those. Those affidavits were done in an effort to streamline the testimony so that they did not have to be called as witnesses. So those affidavits are in your pack and have been submitted under oath, and both are available for questions or cross-examination should that be necessary. So as the city attorney noted, preliminary subdivision approvals within Oakwood District require quasi judicial hearing, although the standards that are applied are objective standards set forth in the UDO regarding certain requirements for subdivision. Ms. Bailey Taylor did a good job summarizing the request, and her, the staff memo and affidavits set forth each section of the UDO that's applicable to the request and how the application satisfies each one. I won't go through each one, but since as the applicant, we have the burden of demonstrating compliance, I will quickly summarize those affidavits and how the application meets each of the requirements, and then if necessary, I can call the engineer, Mr. Crumpler, to provide additional testimony regarding the compliance with the UDO. As noted, this is a 0.29 acre, I do have a PowerPoint. I'll keep going if that could just be pulled up, though, so we have a map to look at. Next slide, yep. As noted, this is a 0.29 acres located on the south side of East Jones Street within the historic Oakwood District, has frontage along both East Jones Street and Mosley Avenue to the south. On the front portion of this lot is an existing home that was originally constructed in the 1860s, and the rear of the lot that fronts Mosley Avenue is primarily vacant. The proposed subdivision would divide the existing lot into two parcels for the purpose of constructing a single-family home on the new lot that fronts Mosley Avenue. The lot with the existing home would be 0.156 acres, and the new lot along Mosley Avenue would be 0.124 acres. On this site map that's in front of you, you'll see the existing lot is outlined in red. You'll see that to the west of this lot, over two lots, is another lot that was created and recorded in 2004. The recorded subdivision plot for that lot is included in your exhibit packet under Exhibit five. As you'll see, that lot is very consistent with the lot that is being proposed as a part of the subdivision request. As noted, the RHDC did review this preliminary subdivision application as required under the UDO and recommended approval to City Council. The property is zoned R10 within the Oakwood Historic Overlay District. That has a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 45 feet for interior lots, and a minimum lot depth of 60 feet. All those requirements have been satisfied with the new lot, with Lot one exceeding that requirement by more than 2,700 square foot, with Lot two exceeding the minimum lot size by more than 1,200 square feet. The lot width for the new lot that's being created is 60 feet, which exceeds the minimum requirements by 15 feet, and the depth of the new Lot two is over 88 feet, which exceeds the 60-foot requirement, and Lot one would be 112 feet deep, almost doubling the minimum lot depth requirements. Chapter eight of the UDO sets forth the remaining subdivision standards, which are outlined in Ms. Bailey Taylor's affidavit. Eight point two governs infrastructure sufficiency. Water and sewer are available, and the developer will be responsible for connecting. Eight point three governs blocks, lots, and access. All requirements of this section have been met. Access to the public right of way is provided, and the applicant recognizes its obligation to either construct a one additional foot of sidewalk along East Jones Street and a six-foot sidewalk along Mosley Avenue or pay a fee in lieu. No other portions of eight point three are applicable to the case. Eight point four governs new streets. There's no streets being proposed, so it's not applicable. Streetscape type under eight point five, one of the UDO, is satisfied. The staff report notes that it's compliance with the streetcape types, and the applicant is dedicating anywhere between eight to 10 feet of additional right-of-way along Mosley Avenue. As noted in Ms. Bailey Taylor's affidavit, Articles eight point six, eight point seven, eight point eight, eight point nine, eight point 10, and eight point 11 are either not applicable or will be satisfied as a result of the conditions of approval set forth in the staff memo. Note that what we're talking about tonight is just preliminary subdivision approval. This will still have to go back to the RHDC or a certificate of appropriateness for any new construction that's constructed on the lot to determine whether or not that proposed structure is congruous with the historic district as a whole. So as Ms. Bailey Taylor's affidavit, as well as the other exhibits show, this proposed subdivision does meet the requirements of the UDO. I will, I had planned to call Mr. Crumpler to provide additional testimony, but what I may do in the interest of time and the hour is to just hold off on that, and if necessary... and if necessary, we can have him testify and rebuttal, if that's necessary. At this time, Mayor Baldwin, I'd ask that all the Exhibits 1 through 6 that we've submitted be admitted into the evidence in the record, as well as the PowerPoint presentation that was attached as Exhibit 6, that's in the council's packet. I will also reserve the right to cross-examine any witnesses, if necessary, and provide rebuttal testimony as appropriate. With that, Mayor Baldwin asks that the City Council approve this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I think we're fine, and Mayor, if it's okay with you, we'll just admit those exhibits?
Yes.
Okay, so now it's time for the opponents to testify. The first one we have is Mandy Locke.
Good evening, my name is Mandy Locke, and I live at 532 Mosley Lane. My home sits about 25 feet.
We need to get you in again, real quick.
Okay, sure.
Gail, you're muted.
Just wanted to make sure that she was on the line. Could you state your full name, please?
Sure, Amanda Sue Locke.
And you have signed an oath form prior to the hearing, but can you please swear or affirm again for the record that the testimony you will give tonight will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry for interrupting. Mandy, you can go ahead.
No worries, I'll begin again. Good evening, my name is Mandy Locke, and I live at 532 Mosley Lane. My home sits about 25 feet from the proposed subdivision directly across the street. This has been a single lot that would host a single home, so I imagine you're thinking, what's the big deal? To understand that, you have to appreciate the gem that is Mosley Lane and Hungry Neck subdivision. Hungry Neck subdivision, of which Mosley Lane is the largest part, was created by the City of Raleigh in 1999. The city took the land by eminent domain, paying off hundreds of heirs for the stake in the property. The subdivision was among the city's first efforts to use infill development as a way to create modest workforce housing close to the city center. The homes were initially deed restricted and income qualified. The small neighborhood has blossomed into a diverse, family-friendly enclave. Mosley Lane hosts 13 homes. Mosley Lane is a narrow street lined with 1,000 square foot and 16,000 square foot homes. A row of 1,000 square foot bungalows sit on the south side of the street, facing the new lot being proposed on the north side. The city designed Hungry Neck subdivision without homes on the north side. If the city allows the subdivision and the development of this proposed lot on the northern part of Mosley Lane, it will result in a precedent for further development on this side of the road. Consequently, at least another three could be created by historic Oakwood property owners. The proposed home would be considered part of historic Oakwood. As such, any home would be required to fit within the character of that historic neighborhood. Our community has a character which is decidedly different from historic Oakwood. The proposed home would now face a row of 1,000 square foot bungalows. The applicants have indicated their plan to build a home two to three times that size. Many days, Mosley Lane seems like a sleepy little street, a hidden treasure tucked between the busy throughways of Jones and Edington Streets. Kids play on our street, they erected a basketball court in the cul-de-sac. It's a deadened road with no sidewalks, and children ride butt bikes up and down all day. Over the last few years, though, more and more traffic has been drawn to our street. Because of parked cars, only one car can pass at a time. A few times, delivery trucks have been unable to maneuver down our street at all. Lowe's had to deliver a washing machine by Dolly from Swain Street one day when a neighbor had a contractor working on his house. My last concern is about water runoff and flooding. As more development comes to the streets around our homes, more and more water is collected in our street and in our yards. In the last few years, I had to work with the city to address water runoff from the apartments behind my home. With new development on Edington Street, more water rushed into my property during storms. After heavy rains, I had ankle-deep water standing in my side and backyard. This morning, after a night of rain, trash and yard debris washed up on Mosley Lane. The proposed subdivision is located significantly above grade from my home. Its development would result in a dramatic increase in impermeable surface area and water runoff. As we take away more of our green space, we have stripped our community of spaces for water to run and absorb. As I stated already, this would be the first home facing Mosley Lane on the north side of the street. This property stands to overwhelm and unduly burden our tiny street. If the city permits the subdivision, then others might follow. This could increase the density of our tiny cul-de-sac community by as much as 35%. Car by car, delivery truck by delivery truck, rainstorm by rainstorm, this could quickly overwhelm our modest neighborhood. I know these might seem like small concerns in the scheme of all you consider on a daily basis, but to the 13 families who make a home on Mosley Lane, these are safety and quality life concerns of consequence. By allowing the subdivision, you are allowing a piece of the historic district to effectively become a part of another established neighborhood. Please regard the Hungry Neck neighborhood as the wonderful community that the city created it to be and prevent this subdivision. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, before we have any council questions, Mr. Essex, do you have any cross-examination for Ms. Locke?
I have one question, Madam City Attorney. Ms. Locke, do you contend that any of the UDO requirements have not been satisfied with this preliminary subdivision application?
I don't believe that they've been investigated fully enough, stormwater runoff and traffic issues.
Are there any specific provisions of the UDO that you contend have not been satisfied?
Previously, when the subdivision was under review, I was told that the subdivision was not sizable enough to warrant a review for either of those two issues, but I believe that they are issues that need and warrant review.
Those are all the questions I have, Madam City Attorney.
Okay, thank you. The next person is Melissa Blackburn.
Can you state your full name for the record, please?
Melissa Ann Blackburn.
Melissa, you have signed an oath form prior to the hearing, but can you please swear or affirm again that for the record that the testimony you will be given tonight is truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And I second everything that Mandy said. I tried to edit my document as she was speaking. I'm also a small business owner who took off work tonight and has to be back at work early in the morning, so I know we're all tired. I just thank you for listening to my perspective and opinions tonight. I appreciate being heard. My name is Melissa Blackburn, and I own my home at 528 Mosley Lane, which is approximately 25 feet as well from this proposed site. I do understand my fellow neighbors' desire to subdivide their property and build this initial home, and I do promise to act with respect and kindness no matter the outcome, though I am opposed to the subdivision. My biggest concern is also traffic flow and parking. I did hear the attorney reference a sidewalk on Mosley Lane. We actually do not have any sidewalks, so that's one of the issues. When I was driving home from work today, I was contemplating this meeting, and I don't claim to be a city planner or a construction expert, but when I'm driving home, my route from work is I go down Jones Street, turn on Swain, and then enter Mosley Lane. And after driving home today, I went and roughly measured the streets, and I know that Jones Street is 38 feet in width, and our street is only 24 feet in width, and there aren't any sidewalks on our street, and there are on Jones, and that's one of the issues, is parking and children playing. I think that's one of our greatest concerns. Right now, we don't have any houses on the north side of our street, so we are able to work together, and it doesn't seem to be an issue regularly. It isn't feasible for cars to park on both sides of our street or for larger vehicles to pass if there were cars parked on both sides. Last spring, I did a renovation, and it was even with an occasional large truck outside my house. It was a juggling act to make it work for my neighbors. And as I look out my front window today, I can't imagine having a driveway across the street that close in proximity or additional street parking. And for my day-to-day concerns is getting my car in and out of my driveway and be able to host guests, and even the idea of construction for an extensive period of time for this type of project. And again, as Mandy mentioned, my most secondary concern is flooding and water runoff, and I know we haven't qualified for some of the preliminary information on that, but as I moved in nine years ago, I've noticed that there is constantly flooding and some issues with rainwater with some previous construction, and I'm worried that additional green space being taken out of our street might make that even worse for myself and for my neighbors. And I know my worries might seem small compared to a lot of the other topics tonight, but to us that live on Mosley Lane, this is a huge concern for us in regards to safety and the quality of our life on our streets, and I just, again, appreciate being heard tonight. And my hopes and wishes are to maintain the safety and beauty of our community here on Mosley Lane by not allowing this subdivision and in turn prevent new construction on the north side of our street. Thank you so much.
Okay, does council have any questions before I go to Chad, or Mr. Essex? Okay, Chad, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, the next witness is Louise Farmer.
Could you please state your full name for the record?
Louise Adelaide Farmer.
You have signed an oath form prior to the hearing, but can you please swear or affirm again for the record that the testimony you will be given tonight will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I moved in as one of the original owners in the year 2000. I'm at 520 Mosley Lane. It's been a wonderful place to live. It's got its own character, as Mandy and Missy have so eloquently expressed. I don't have very much to add, except that I don't really understand how you can extend the Oakwood neighborhood into our neighborhood. It's gonna change the character of our neighborhood. So that's one concern, just changing the whole character of what we have here on Mosley Lane, as well as the safety issues, the traffic issues, and setting a precedent for more building on the back of the Jones Street properties. That's really all I have to say, because I agree with everything Mandy and Missy have said so far. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have any questions, council? Mr. Knight?
Just to be clear, the south side of Mosley is not in the Historic Overlay District?
They're both in the Historic.
They both are. It is in there, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's that the property is, so it's...
Not the property we're talking about, but where these folks live on the south side.
Oh, no, they're not in. They're not in.
They're not in the Historic.
Correct, correct. They are not, so that's how the street is. Mr. Cox?
Okay, so I'm looking at Mosley Lane on Google Maps. It looks more like an alleyway. It doesn't seem to have any curb or gutter. And I was wondering what bearing this might have on this case as far as subdividing and developing this property with connectivity to Mosley Lane, given that it really isn't built, it doesn't appear to be built in city street standards.
We'd have to have Alicia address that, and there's also someone from Transportation is available if she needs some help with that, I think.
I will defer to Transportation for that question.
Okay, I think Renee Hagen is on the line.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for having me. The street is built to the...
Hold on, it's sworn in. Sorry. Sorry, I know it's late.
Okay.
Can you state your full name?
My name is Renee Holbert Hagen.
Have signed an oath form prior to the hearing tonight, but can you please swear or affirm again that for the record that the testimony you will give tonight will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And Renee, tell them what your title is.
I'm the Senior Engineering Reviewer for the Private Development Group of the Transportation Department for the City of Raleigh.
Okay, can you answer Mr. Cox's question with respect to what, whether, how that impacts the subdivision approval?
Yes, the street is, yes, that's correct, it's a smaller street, but the minimum standard that was shown on the plan is a minimum standard we have for two-way street alleys today also.
Mr. Cox, do you have any other questions for Renee while he's here? Anyone else?
Well, I guess, how do you measure the width of the street? Because honestly, you have, on the side where the houses are, you have a well-defined edge to the street, but on the other side, it's just vegetation. I mean, there's no pavement. So...
We would measure the pavement width.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Essex, do you have any questions for Mr. Hagen?
No questions.
Okay, anybody else before he leaves? Okay, Amber Nemrocks, the next person, the last person.
Yes. Excuse me, can you state your full name for the record, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Amber Nemrocks.
You have signed an oath form prior to the hearing tonight, but could you please swear or affirm again for the record that the testimony you will be given will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I know we're all tired. I hate that this was the last of a very long list of things to take care of. My name is Amber Nemrocks, and I live at 504 Mosley Lane at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I am also concerned about the issues of parking and storm runoff that Mandy and Missy and Louise brought up. And also, the addition of a sidewalk, which I was not aware of until this evening, seems like an enormous and impractical intrusion on the street. But I am also opposed to this subdivision due to the artificial inflation of property values and the resulting city tax bills that neighbors of this rezoned property would suffer. The Raleigh city planners who created the Mosley Lane Redevelopment Project in the late 1990s had a vision to revive a neighborhood and help foster community. Homeowners like me and my neighbors bought the only homes many of us have ever owned. We've nurtured a close-knit community of small homeowners who have very diverse backgrounds. My husband and I paid $180,000 for our house in 2015. It is small, 1,600 square feet, modest and affordable. It was intended to help the homeowners build a community. Our street and the ones around it include Habitat for Humanity houses and many first-time home buyers. A few years ago, a family bought the house next door to us on Mosley Lane. When we moved in, it was an 800-square-foot brick bungalow that had been built by the original resident, Papa Jack, a gardener who had worked for folks in Oakwood since the 1950s. My next-door neighbors planted a giant modernist house on top of it. Two months ago, they sold it for $849,000. As you can imagine, the escalation of their property values has quite an impact on my property taxes and those of my neighbors on Mosley Lane. on Mosley Lane. My own house hasn't changed much in the past 15 years, but because of my neighbors who moved back to Pennsylvania after spending a few years here, my taxes have increased 50% this year over last. A house of the size proposed in the rezoning request will have a similar effect on the other property owners on Mosley Lane. I don't believe that this is what the city planners who designed and built Mosley Lane had in mind. If the Raleigh City Council is truly committed to making sure that anyone other than the super-rich can afford to live in our city and near downtown, it should consider the intention behind neighborhood design and whether the decisions it makes honors its dedication to affordable housing.
Now I'm muted. I'm sorry. I apologize. Does anyone have any questions? Chad, Mr. Essick?
No questions.
Okay. With that, that's all of the opponents, so if Chad, you want to go ahead and present any rebuttal evidence that you may have or, and/or give your closing comments?
Is Josh Crumpler on the line?
Yes, he is.
Can you unmute him for a couple of questions, please?
Unmuted.
Josh, can you state your name for the record?
Josh Crumpler, 2308 Ridge Road.
Are you a licensed engineer in good standing in North Carolina?
Yes, I am.
Did you prepare the plans under Exhibit 3 for preliminary subdivision approval?
I did.
Did you receive comments back from the city staff regarding the compliance of those plans with the UDO?
Yes, we worked through several rounds of comments.
Have you addressed all staff comments and otherwise demonstrated compliance with the applicable provisions of the city's UDO governing subdivision approval?
I have.
To your knowledge, are there any outstanding issues or staff comments to be resolved?
No.
Did you prepare the document identified as Exhibit 4 entitled "Stormwater Impact Analysis for 542 East Jones Street, a Two-Lot Subdivision"?
Yes.
And why did you prepare that?
There was a comment for structural flooding, historical structural flooding for the adjacent property, so we prepared the analysis to show there would be no net increase in flooding to the adjacent structure.
Okay. And did that analysis satisfy staff with respect to that analysis that was completed?
That's correct.
Are there any outstanding comments or issues concerning that stormwater analysis?
There are not.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Crumpler.
Okay. Counsel, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Crumpler? Mr. Melton?
Yeah, I don't know that I have a question. I just, was he sworn in as a witness?
Oh.
No.
Oh, did we miss Gail? Thank you.
He was sworn in previously.
He signed an oath, but the rules have him reaffirm. Go ahead, Gail.
Could you state your name for the record, please, your full name?
Joshua Chala Crumpler, 2308 Ridge Road.
You have signed an oath form prior to the hearing, but can you please swear or affirm again for the record that the testimony that you gave tonight is truthful?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just a question for Josh, so I'm clear. As far as stormwater, this subdivision and possible development would not have a negative impact based on your opinion?
Based off the analysis for the structural flooding for the adjacent property, I think it was 546 East Jones Street, it would not have negative impact.
What about the properties across the street on Mosley?
I wasn't, I was not required to do an analysis on those properties, as part of the subdivision review.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. Chad, do you have any closing comments?
Yeah, just briefly, you know, one of the, I will say that when the opponents signed up and we had their email addresses, Ms. Still did reach out to them at the end of last week to try and address any of the concerns that they had expressed at the RHDC. One of those concerns was the issue of parking along Mosley, which we, as you'll see on the proposed footprint plan that's in the PowerPoint presentation, or the concept plan does show a lengthy driveway that would accommodate off-street parking for this, so there would not be on-street parking. So we did communicate that to them as well. You know, I think, based on the evidence that we've submitted and the staff's review and the standards that are to be applied for preliminary subdivision approval, we believe that we've presented evidence that we meet those standards, and in light of that, we would respectfully ask that the council approve the preliminary subdivision. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. At this time, we can close the hearing, and counsel can deliberate, or if you are ready to make a motion, there is, at the end of Ms. Bailey Taylor's staff report, provided a motion to grant and a motion to deny.
Question?
Yes.
Just to follow up on Mr. Branch's question about the properties across the street as related to stormwater. Are we permitted to consider that in deliberating on this?
Well, you would have to consider the evidence in front of you, and if it's a UDO requirement, for them to provide evidence or do an analysis of that, and it was insufficient, you could consider it. So I would ask Alicia to please address whether or not that that is something that is contemplated as part of the UDO standard, and if it's not, then you couldn't deny it based on something that wasn't required by the UDO.
Because it's a stormwater issue, I'd like to defer to stormwater staff if they're still available.
Yes, we do have Ashley here. Beth, is Ashley still here?
Yes, Ashley's been unmuted.
Okay, so let's bring Ashley on and have Gail swear her in.
Can you state your full name, please?
Ashley Rogers.
You have signed an oath form prior to this hearing, but can you please swear or affirm again for the record that the testimony that you will give tonight will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So to answer the question that was posed with respect to whether an additional stormwater analysis was required by code for the properties on Mosley, it was not. It is not required by code. The only reason that the study was required for the adjacent property that Mr. Crumpler mentioned was that there was actually documented case of structural flooding at 546 East Jones Street. Only a small portion of the lot being subdivided actually flows to that structure, but code requires an analysis of the drainage to the point of structural flooding. And because there are no documented cases of structural flooding on Mosley Street, no analysis of structural flooding was required by code.
Okay. And then, one final question for me. After this hearing is over, what recourse does anyone have for appeal?
There, after the written findings of fact and conclusions of law are adopted by the council, there's a 30-day appeal period for whoever was not the propel, any party withstanding that wants to challenge the decision can file a petition for writ of certiorari with the Superior Court, and that is an appeal on the record based on whether or not the evidence in the record supported the council's decision here. So there is an appeal to Superior Court. And I am not seeing which one of these attachments is your. Do you see where it is?
I don't see anything either.
I know. It was in there. I'm not sure why it's not there.
What was the question?
There's a staff report that goes through the, goes through the case like there is for any other case, and I do not see it attached to the board docs, although it was previously attached, so I'm not sure where it is now.
I can share my screen if you'd like.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, and also, if you could submit the staff report and make that part of the record as an exhibit, and go ahead and, you know, I guess, email that to Gail in the morning, or when you're finished.
Will be.
I'm not sure why it didn't, what happened, but if you can put those two up on the screen if someone wants to pick one of those motions and read it. Also, just for the record, I've just been told that her staff report is also attached to the exhibit as an exhibit to her affidavit, so it is definitely in the record. It's just not separate. So there are the potential motions.
Mayor, I know you can't see any of us right now, but I had already had this pulled up because I found this document, and I'm prepared to make a motion if we're ready for one.
Please do.
Yeah, I understand the concerns of the residents and neighbors. This is an odd situation, though. This council has now had to do two of these evidentiary hearings, and, you know, as a lawyer, I understand that you have to check off certain boxes to satisfy your case, and I believe that the applicant has, based on the record that we heard tonight. So based on the evidence presented at the hearing, I move to approve the subdivision application for Sub 0054-2019 542 East Jones Street, subject to and including the proposed conditions of approval.
Okay, please take, okay, do we have a second?
Madam Mayor, I seconded this, but I want to make a statement after the vote.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Mayor Protam, please continue.
Yes, if I could have staff to look at the stormwater in this area, I know this is also looking on a transit corridor as far as bus rapid transit, but I want to make sure that we are addressing some of these runoff situations that we're having. So staff at some point can come back, either in the manager's report or to the council, with just some information on number of concerns, challenges that they're seeing, and then also if those who were called tonight, if you could call our staff or call our office and provide your information so that we can just, I just want to get a better understanding on some of these stormwater challenges that are happening in this area as, you know, things progress.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Okay.
I think Councilman Cox's hand is up. You can barely see it.
Yeah, well, I'm fading away.
Literally and figuratively.
They come back with an analysis of streets like this and about the sufficiency of these streets. They really look very narrow. I know the current standard is that this is a standard for a two-way alleyway. Well, a two-way alleyway is very different from a two-way street, in my opinion, and I'd like to have some sort of analysis done on these to explain the differences in the standards and maybe we shouldn't be approving these things in the future, but that would require a text change. And I'd like to have some analysis on these things, because I voted for this even though I didn't want to, because it checked off all the boxes, and I really think we're pushing the standards to the extreme in order to allow development on both sides of a narrow street like this.
I will just say, I remind counsel, and this was in my memo to you, that you did approve a text change to move these to the RHDC. It has been drafted and is in the queue and is in that line of text amendments, so it should be before you soon. So if you approve it, this would move these to the RHDC instead of council. So we started that from the last one. So there's nothing else that we need to do for the hearing, Mayor. Okay. Clerk, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to say that this will be on the agenda for the next meeting for your consideration of approval.
The written decision. Well, I would like to thank everybody who showed up tonight and stuck with us, everybody through the evidentiary hearing. Apologize for the long evening. I'd also like to thank Counselor Stewart's cat for jumping in and joining us. So anyhow, having said that, everybody, try and get a good night's sleep now, and thank you for your, well, I'm too tired to know what I'm talking about. Thank you for hanging in there with us, and I appreciate it. So good night, everybody. The meeting is adjourned.